Holder's not looking at the camera though.
Good evening, everyone. May I have your attention? Good evening, everyone. It is six oh one, actually, PM on Tuesday, February the fourteenth, 2023. Happy Valentine's Day. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone in our city council audience, as well as our listening audience at WCBU. I'd like to welcome the audience watching by cable channel twenty-two. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Please call the roll.
Mayor Ali. Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Seer. Councilmember Grab. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Euler. Councilmember Riggenbach. Councilmember Ruckregel. And Councilmember Valpula.
Present.
We have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you. Please join me, everyone, and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Madam Clerk, before we proceed, I'd like to read a notice to our township electors pursuant to Public Act zero nine five dash zero seven six one. If you desire to have an item considered on the agenda at the annual town meeting to be held on Tuesday, April the eleventh, 2023, at six o'clock PM, you are required to bring a specific request signed by fifteen or more electors to the clerk no later than Wednesday, March the first. Any group of registered voters may request an advisory question of public policy for consideration by the electors at the annual meeting by giving written notice of the specific advisory question to the township clerk in the same manner as required for an agenda item under subsection B of section thirty dash ten of the Township Code. Madam Clerk?
We are at proclamations.
We have three proclamations today. The first proclamation honors Black History Month. Whereas the city of Peoria celebrates Black History Month and recognizes that people of African descent have been a part of our community since seventeen seventy-three, when Jean Baptiste Pointe Desable purchased land here, according to historian Romeo B. Garrett. And whereas historian Carter G. Woodson, in recognizing the need to acknowledge and celebrate the achievements of Black Americans, developed Negro History Week in nineteen twenty-six, and this expanded to become Black History Month. Whereas since nineteen seventy-six, every US president has officially designated the month of February as Black History Month. February was chosen primarily because the second week of the month coincides with the birthdays of both Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. Lincoln was influential in the emancipation of slaves, and Douglas, a former slave, was a prominent leader in the abolitionist movement which fought to end slavery. And whereas the theme for this year's Black History Month, as chosen by the Association for the Study of African American Life and History, is Black Resistance. And whereas this month is a time for all Americans to reflect on the rich history and teaching of Black Americans whose contributions to our economic, cultural, political, and social development are vast. And whereas the city of Peoria is proud to honor the history and contributions of Black Americans in our community, throughout our state and our nation. Now, therefore, I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the city of Peoria, Illinois, and on behalf of the Peoria City Council, recognize February one through March one as Black History Month in Peoria, Illinois. Our second proclamation recognizes the Central Illinois chapter of Society of Women Engineers for National Engineers Week. And we have Kade Diallo and Kristi Lee. Thank you, ladies, for being here.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Chris.
Okay, I'm gonna read the proclamation first, and then it'll be your turn. Whereas the Society of Women Engineers, SWE, is that correct? SWE, founded in nineteen fifty, is a nonprofit educational and service organization that is the driving force that established engineering as a highly desirable career aspiration for women. And whereas SWE empowers women to succeed and advance in their aspirations while receiving recognition and credit for their life-changing contributions and achievements as engineers and leaders in our community. Whereas the Central Illinois section of SWE comprised of two hundred and twenty members has focused on outreach, professional development, advocacy, and work-life integration for the past thirty years. And whereas in nineteen fifty-one, the National Society of Professional Engineers created National Engineers Week to draw attention to the contributions that engineers make on our society. Whereas this year, National Engineers Week will be held February the nineteenth through February the twenty-fifth. The Central Illinois section of SWE will partner with the Peoria Riverfront Museum on February the nineteenth, 2023, to celebrate National Engineers Week with an open house for students from elementary school through high school with an interest in science and math. Several professional societies will also participate. Now, therefore, I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the city of Peoria, Illinois, recognize the Central Illinois section of the Society of Women Engineers for their support and advocacy of National Engineers Week in Peoria, Illinois.
Thank you, Mayor Ali, and Peoria City Council. My name is Kristi Lee, and I am president-elect of the Society of Women Engineers, Central Illinois Section, and I'm here with Kade Diallo, who is co-chair of our Outreach Committee. The Society of Women Engineers was founded in nineteen fifty. Our mission is to empower women to achieve their full potential in careers as engineers and leaders, to expand the image of engineering and technology professions as a positive force in improving the quality of life, and to demonstrate the value of diversity inclusion. The Central Illinois section, founded in nineteen ninety-two, is now two hundred and sixty members strong. Members come from Peoria, Bloomington, Springfield, Champaign, Decatur, and surrounding communities. And we collaborate with collegiate sections of SWE at Bradley University and at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. We have a strong executive board, and our various committees, including professional development, work-life integration, advocacy, awards, and outreach, plan multiple events throughout the year to enrich the lives of our members and to make an impact in our local community. Last year, our section awarded a scholarship of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for a college student who resides in Central Illinois. Each year, we continue to raise money to increase our scholarship endowment so that we can help more young women in Central Illinois pursue careers in engineering and technology. To learn more about our section, please visit us at centralillinois.swe.org or connect with us on Facebook. Thanks to the financial support of Caterpillar and SWE program development grants, our Outreach Committee has connected with thousands of girls and boys in our community through different events to promote science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Now, Kade will talk a little bit more about our outreach initiatives in the area.
Thanks, Kristi. Good afternoon, or good evening, everyone. My name is Kade Diallo, and as stated earlier, I'm currently co-chair on the Outreach Committee for the Society of Women Engineers, Central Illinois. As part of outreach, we do our best to inspire students in our community in regards to science, technology, engineering, and math, both well-known as STEM. Just to name a few, last year, our SWE participants and volunteers collaborated with the Peoria Dream Center, the SWE Next Program at Liberty, the 4G camps, and other 4H programs, and we even co-hosted a STEM boot camp with the NESBI organization. Although most of those events will carry on in 2023, we're once again starting the year off strong with Engineering Day at the Riverfront Museum and Caterpillar's Visitor Center, and admissions will be free to the public for everyone this year. SWE will have multiple hands-on activities for students of all ages to inspire their creativity and hopefully inspire them to go into the STEM field. We'll be having different activities, from creating flashlights with popsicle sticks and batteries, and keychains and buttons, to working with magnetic slime and understanding how potential hydrogen levels, also known as pH levels, work. So please, if you can, stop by on Sunday, February nineteenth, from noon to five PM at Riverfront Museum and Caterpillar Visitor Center, and say hello to our awesome volunteers, majority of which are from Bradley University. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lee, Ms. Diallo, thank you for your leadership and inspiration and encouragement for girls to go into engineering. I'll try to bring my granddaughters to that event on February the nineteenth. Our last proclamation goes to Peoria High School Football Team. After the proclamation, we're going to hear from head coach, Coach Thornton, Tim Thornton. I don't think Mr. Dumfry is here today, is he? Okay, so we'll hear from Coach Thornton, and we'll also hear from Councilman Grab, who brought the proclamation forward. Whereas we are here tonight to honor the Peoria High School Lions Football Team, as we recognize the success of their remarkable season. And whereas Lions have long been recognized in works of art, music, and literature as symbols of courage, nobility, strength, and valor, as animals that coexist in groups known as a pride, Lions are renowned for protecting their territory and looking out for the safety and well-being of each other. Whereas the Peoria Lions experienced twelve victories and only two losses during their 2022 season. With an outstanding average of fifty-three points a game, they advanced over Morris and lost by one mere point, with a score of forty-five to forty-four to state champion Nazareth Academy. Their season concluded with the 2022 IHSA Class 5A second-place title. They are indeed the pride of the city. And whereas these student athletes demonstrated hard work, commitment, dedication, determination, and teamwork throughout the season, on and off the field. It is important to note that every varsity starter for the past thirteen seasons has always been academically eligible to play. Whereas the Peoria High School Football Program boasts an impressive legacy of athletes who continued after high school, including twenty-four current professional and collegiate football players. Whereas Athletic Director Brian Dumfry, Head Coach Tim Thornton, and Assistant Coaches Jeff Roper, Ben Mahan, Asa Lewis, Chip Bates, Jeff Blune, Montell Burton, Aaron Montgomery, Juan O'Neil, Dave Frazier, Maurice Mottford, DeMarvus Dixon, Corey Scott, Eric Black, and Daryl Smith were all instrumental in leading the Peoria Lions to these achievements. Now, therefore, I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the city of Peoria, do hereby celebrate and acknowledge the successes of the Peoria High School Football Program. Coach Thornton?
Thank you so much for having us. We appreciate this recognition. Great group of kids that we had this year, super proud of them. It was read in the proclamation, the number was twenty-four. We've, with this group, we've added eight more, and we've got, so that puts us to thirty-two, and we've still got about six that are still trying to decide where they want to attend and be college students and college student athletes as well. So this group added to the legacy, and we're, obviously, we're extremely proud of them, and it was a fun group to have, and thank you all so much for having us.
Great. Can you take a moment and tell us your names?
I'm sorry?
Can they take a moment and tell us their names?
Sure. If you guys just wanna, just kinda, we'll start here, come by, say your name, and then just slide out that way. Have you guys go around that way. So Cortez?
Cortez, Erby.
Keegan, D Ford.
Karah Ferguson.
Deuce Thornton.
Trail, Barry Hill.
Jenkins, Tailman.
Jamir Fuller.
Isaiah Walker.
Braylon Mitchell.
Braden Mall.
A.J. Roscoe.
Caleb Lawson.
Kumar Marford.
Melikai Washington.
Dominic Batista.
Landon Newby-Holson.
Ricky Hearn.
Kenny Rutherford.
Tawon Smith.
Nizer Chambers.
Ricky Porter.
Ashton Jenkins-Boy.
Kevin Roberts.
I am Athino Fuller.
Councilmember Grab?
Thornton, I'm going to have to give a midnight confession, although it's not midnight yet. I am a proud Peoria High alumnus. I attended Peoria High, I won't say what years, and then I was hired to come back as a social studies teacher, I won't say what year. But you oversee one of the greatest football programs in the state of Illinois, and I know greater things are gonna come. And your part, I don't need to tell you, of a great tradition at Peoria High School, which remains one of the oldest, ongoing public high school west, high schools west of the Alleghenies. And we're so proud of the tradition that Peoria High has established through the years, and you're continuing to carry that torch. And I want you to know that this community supports the Peoria High Lions, both by word and by deed, with some twenty million dollars being spent to upgrade facilities at Peoria High School in the past twelve years. That is a tremendous commitment on the part of our city. And your high school may be residing technically in the geography of District Two, but we have Councilman Riggenbach, children come to Peoria High from his district. Every one of our council members here, it doesn't matter what the boundary lines are, we're all proud of you. And when we had Notre Dame soccer team here, we were all proud of them. So this does not, this isn't anything that's defined by boundary lines, our pride for the Peoria High Lions and for the excellent job you're doing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you again so much. We put Peoria on our test, and we throw the skyline on our helmet, and we represent for everybody as well. So whatever we can do, we're gonna create that, create that ownership of the city with our kids and create that membership and that family, so we appreciate you. Thanks.
Madam Clerk?
We are at the approval of the minutes.
Councilman Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I move to approve the minutes of the Joint City Council and Town Board Meeting, held on January twenty-fourth, 2023, as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We have one town item. Twenty-three dash zero three-two is a request from the town officials to approve the January 2023 actual expenditures and to approve the February 2023 anticipated expenditures for the town of the city of Peoria.
Member Grab?
Mayor Ali, I move to approve these as outlined.
Seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the consent agenda. Twenty-three dash zero three-three is a communication from the Mayor and Corporation Council with a request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency. Twenty-three dash zero thirty-four is a communication with a request to approve the low bid of Audabomb in the amount of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars for the Prospect Arcadia traffic calming, with an additional authorization of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars for contingencies, for a total contract award of one hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Twenty-three dash zero thirty-five is a communication with a request to approve a purchase with Rare Rig Pacific Company in an amount not to exceed forty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars for seven hundred and two new ninety-five gallon garbage carts for replacement in inventory. Twenty-three dash zero thirty-six is a communication with a request to approve a resolution in support of tax increment financing, requesting the Illinois Legislature to support tax increment financing in its present form to promote economic development and revitalization throughout Illinois. Twenty-three dash zero thirty-seven is a communication with a request to concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to approve a resolution approving an annexation agreement for the property located at ninety-six zero one North Allen Road, Peoria, Illinois. Twenty-three dash zero thirty-eight is a communication with a request to adopt an ordinance partially abating the tax heretofore levied to pay special service area property taxes on the Peoria Sports Center Special Service Area in the amount of one hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Twenty-three dash zero thirty-nine is a communication with, with a request to adopt an ordinance partially abating the tax heretofore levied to pay special service area property taxes on the Holiday and Property Tax Special Service Area in the amount of seventy-three thousand dollars. Twenty-three dash forty is a communication with a request to adopt an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied to pay principal of and interest on general obligation corporate purpose bonds of the city of Peoria, Peoria County, Illinois, two thousand and seven Series A and two thousand and twenty-two Series A. Twenty-three dash forty-one is a communication with a request to approve the Labor Day Picnic at Riverfront Festival Park on September fourth, 2023, sponsored by Peoria Area Community Events, Inc., subject to their filing the necessary permits and approval as required by the city code. Twenty-three dash zero forty-two is a communication with a request to approve the site application to move a Class E one private club over two hundred liquor license, subclass three beer garden, with onsite consumption and retail sale of alcohol for Creve Court Club of Peoria, doing business as Creve Court Club, from four fifty-six Fulton Street, Suite one eighty-six, to two one two Southwest Water Street, Suite three, contingent upon the issuance of all appropriate permits and a certificate of occupancy, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve. Twenty-three dash zero forty-three is a communication with a request to approve the site application for a Class B one restaurant twenty-five percent food liquor license with the onsite consumption and retail sale of alcohol, with the subclass one A, two AM closing hours, for Pioneer University Roadhouse, Inc., doing business as Richards on University at seventy-eight oh five North University Street, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve. Twenty-three dash forty-four is a communication with a request to receive and file the Springdale Cemetery Management Authority annual budget from 2020, 2021, 2022, and 2023. And twenty-three dash zero forty-five is a communication with a request to receive and file the month ended December thirty-first, 2022, unaudited financial report, and that concludes our consent agenda.
Are there any items to remove from consent? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Twenty-three oh forty-two, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Riggenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Twenty-three dash oh forty-four.
Thank you. Councilmember Grab?
Mayor Ali, after Councilmember Kelly is, has completed his input on twenty-three dash zero four-two, I have a few comments I'd like to make as well.
Thank you. Are there any other items to remove from consent? Can I get a motion to approve moved by Councilmember Ruckregel, seconded by Councilmember Seer? Any discussion? Please cast your ballots on the consent agenda. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash zero four-two is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Council with a request to approve the site application to move a Class E one private club over two hundred liquor license, subclass three beer garden, with onsite consumption and retail sale of alcohol for Creve Court Club of Peoria, doing business as Creve Court Club, from four fifty-six Fulton Street, Suite one eighty-six, to two one two Southwest Water Street, Suite three. to 212 Southwest Water Street, Suite 3, contingent upon the issuance of all appropriate permits and a certificate of occupancy with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve. And on your desk, there is a handout with the Liquor Commission minutes.
Thank you. Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Corporation Counsel, I'd like to ask you, I am a member of the Creve Court Club. Is it proper for me to abstain from this vote?
Yes, and thank you. Councilman, you and any other members of that club that are also members of the council should abstain from the voting and debate on this matter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Grab.
Well, it was lucky that I decided I wanted to speak to it as well. Manager, I'd like to thank you and your staff for the continuation of progress in fully utilizing taxpayer-owned buildings downtown. And all the council members have helped with this. The Gateway Building and now better use for part of the River Station Building, another beautiful asset, historic building in our downtown. I'm wholeheartedly in support of what we've been doing to make these buildings work for our taxpayers, fixing them up, making them a credit to our downtown. Peoria is moving. Thank you, Manager. And I move to approve.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with three abstentions, Seer, Kelly, and Euler. Madam Clerk.
Twenty-three dash zero four-four is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comptroller with a request to receive and file the Springdale Cemetery Management Authority annual budget from 2020, 2021, 2022, and 2023.
Councilmember Reganbach.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, perhaps this would be more appropriate for Finance Director Craddy, but when you look at this report on the last page, there's a section, "Other Income", and under "Operating Subsidies by the City of Peoria", it's a bunch of zeros. We all know that's not the case. So perhaps you could just explain for us what the city's contribution to Springdale has been.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, the, per the agreement that we have for the management agreement for Springdale Cemetery, the city is responsible for providing $60,000 of capital funds a year in lieu of depreciation. So we provide that. It's a line item in the budget that you approve every year. In addition, as part of the general fund, if there's operating losses of the Springdale Cemetery, the city is responsible after the city of Peoria, or the county of Peoria and the Park District pay their proportionate share, then the city is responsible for covering the rest of those operating deficits. So the, the number at the bottom, I think, is somewhat misleading. It, it should show where they talk about other income, the amount of contributions that the city has made, both from a capital side and from an operating subsidy side. Then that bottom line would be zero. Another way of looking at it is that our contribution is roughly about the $250,000 a year in support to Springdale Cemetery.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I just wanted to make that clear for any casual observers of this document, that the city is fully vested in our commitment to Springdale. Thank you. With that, I would move for approval.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Seer. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We are at first readings. Twenty-three dash zero forty-six is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Council with a request to receive and file a first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 3, subsection 52 of the Code of the City of Peoria to create the Class NP liquor license.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to our Corporation Counsel, who's going to describe this one.
Okay, Council Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Smaller not-for-profit organizations have approached the city, and we've been in discussions with those entities. And Councilman Allen has been a champion of this set of ideas. Smaller not-for-profits were struggling with the cost of the F licenses, which allowed entities to have up to 15 days of events within a 12-month period at $150 for each one-day event. Smaller entities found this to be cost prohibitive, and it was impacting their more modest fundraising efforts. The Class NP license would allow up to six events on a 12-month basis, for $150 for the first event, which is the same cost for the Class F license events. But then each subsequent event, up to the sixth event, would be $50 each and would allow more modest fee for these smaller organizations to approach the public with their fundraising needs and wants and have those addressed at a lower cost. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to say thank you to Corporation Hayes, Attorney Torren, and Deputy Corporation Counsel Kapuska, and also Deputy Clerk Ms. Trina Bonds, and then former police officer Kevin Slavens. We started this conversation late summer about, you know, just being contacted by some of our smaller not-for-profits that are doing great work in our community that want to host events and may want to have liquor at their events, but the $150 price was just a little too steep for them. And so we came up with an opportunity that will allow them to still pay, and we'll also be able to generate some revenue, but it'll be a savings to them. So for example, under the current ordinance, if you were to do six events, it would be $900. If we approved the new modified ordinance, it would be $400. So it would be a cost savings of $500 for those not-for-profits. And so this is just an opportunity for us to support our local not-for-profits, also continue to keep generating revenue, and continue to keep enforcement when it comes to the licenses that we distribute under our liquor code. So again, thank you so much for everyone, and I look forward to future discussion.
So this would be a receive and file. Does any other discussion? Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to thank Councilmember Allen for his work on this. I think this was a very good idea. The, the only thing I wonder about, it wouldn't get in the way of my voting for this next time, there is no upper limit to the not-for-profit entity. Is that correct?
Council Hayes.
So under the NP class, you could have up to six events a year. On, under the F class, you can have up to 15 events per year. Those are the limits. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't make myself clear. If you have a very, very, very large not-for-profit, they're still under this new rule?
Right. I think any not-for-profit that had a limited ambition of how many events per year could take advantage of the six-event limit without regard to the size of the not-for-profit.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to receive and file.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We are at regular business. Twenty-three dash zero forty-seven is a communication from the City Manager and Assistant City Manager with a request to receive and file the American Rescue Plan Act Business Grant Program Supporting Biotech Startups.
Your manager.
Thank you. I'd like to turn the floor over to Assistant City Manager Kimberly Richardson to talk through this proposed program. She's worked very closely with Councilman Velpula, and I'm sure he'll have some comments as well.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Actually, I would like to start with Councilmember Velpula, because this was a concept that we discussed, and he has very much more experience in. And to speak about the biotech industry and what we're trying to accomplish with this particular grant, and I can then follow up with the particulars of the grant to kind of talk about how we're going to administer it. Councilmember.
May I, Madam Mayor? First of all, I would like to thank the City Manager Urick, Assistant City Manager Kimberly Richardson, and Chris Sadee from the Greater Peoria Economic Development Council. So these are the three people they helped to crystallize this idea of providing support for the biotech setup in Peoria. So the ultimate goal of this initiative is to see how Peoria can attract and support talented people and businesses. So we have some amazing institutions right in Peoria. We have the College of Medicine. We have the USDA. We have the OSF Cancer Center. And we have the Unity Point and educational institutions like Bradley and ICC. So these places are doing cutting-edge research and creating new technologies that can help create new companies in Peoria. So if we wanted to support entrepreneurship and innovation in Peoria, we need to make sure that there is enough money to fund these startups. This is the foundation of any innovative economy, and we wanted to, and we wanted Peoria to be the place where entrepreneurs across the country get the funding and they can make Peoria their next destination. So the incoming Cancer Center can very well act as a magnet to attract more biotechs to the city. So I would say by taking this innovative approach to economic development, we can attract more businesses and make it a destination for healthcare innovation. This out-of-the-box idea will give enough push for the Economic Development Council to scout for budding startups that could make Peoria their next destination. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Assistant City Manager? Oh, sorry. I will go ahead and continue on. Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Velpula. One thing is that what we recognize with our ARPA funds, this is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to really infuse and test pilots and projects that we couldn't have done with the type of resources that we had previously, being untethered by regulations and other forms of federal funding guidelines. And so having this program and what we're doing in economic development, in the Economic Development Department, is we're looking at different ways of funding small businesses and startups outside of the normal programs that we've always had in place. What we learned from the WISE program was that we wanted to be a little bit more targeted and intentional. And so this is the first program where we're doing that targeted granting. And so with that, this program is between 15,000, 15,000 to 25,000 per business. And this is a business that is either looking to start their business in Peoria or also existing businesses that are looking to stay within Peoria and identify a location that they would want to begin their business in. The goal of the program is also to look at areas where we need investment in. So we're talking about this program is going to be targeted in the medical district, as Councilmember Velpula mentioned, the central business district, and the West Main Street area. We identified those areas because of proximity, but also as we have a continuing, ongoing conversation about how do we look at our downtown and look at how to expand the types of businesses that are, are in that downtown, this is a great opportunity to utilize those vacant, vacant offices and other storefronts with this program. Lastly, I would like to say this will be able to assist in lease or mortgage assistance. So if they're looking to lease their office space or research space or purchase a building, this will be their assistance. Operational expense and/or other business costs related to the newly opened location. We will continue to look at other ways that as we are trying to spend down our ARPA funding on other targeted programs that could support businesses throughout the city. Any questions? I'm here to answer at this time.
Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to give kudos to Assistant Manager Richardson, Manager Urick, and then my colleague, Councilman Dr. Velpula, on this. Many times we're asked in the public with our American Rescue Plan Act funds, what are you doing to invest those funds in order to receive dividends later on down the line? Because we know at some point, these funds are going to run out. These are soft funds. And I think that this is the perfect example of that, of how do we invest in the biotech industry and possibly lure some of those maybe small startups who can become large? And we know Peoria is a headquarters city. So I definitely applaud you all for having the innovation and the foresight. And thank you to Doctor, Councilman Dr. Velpula, for lending your expertise on this matter. I noticed that looks like the timeline for this is January 1st through December 23rd of next year. Is the goal to resume the program again in 24 as we continue into the, the backend of our ARPA funds?
That would be the likelihood. We want to see what the interest is going to be. Right now, we want to keep the timeline tight, because as we, we learned with our other grants, when you give too much of a, an open process, we end up having to turn people away. So we figure having a tighter timeline would give us a better idea of how to assess moving forward.
Absolutely. And I'm a novice to the biotech industry. So can you maybe provide some insight of how are you marketing this to those startups in this industry that could be eligible for this grant?
So once we have this conversation tonight, that would be our next phase, is looking at how to attract and market. So I don't have that today, but as soon as that is developed, we will share that with the council. And again, we're also wanting to make sure that as we're doing this, identifying and hopefully, you know, with targeting the areas that we can identify, we also want to include some properties that can be a part of that marketing.
Awesome. Sounds good. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I would like to echo Councilmember Allen's remarks regarding this. I think it's a wonderful, innovative program. Is there a fund inside the ARPA funds that this is drawn from? Or is this open-ended until we maybe, hopefully, run out of ARPA money? I mean, i- is there a certain amount of money that's, that is projected to be budgeted for this program?
Yes. So it's $250,000 for this particular program for the year. And we have a part of our designation that the council approved early on in the budget process. We have a small business program. So that's coming from that pot of funding. And this is just one of the many programs that we'll be utilizing that fund to support. I want to say we have about 900,000 that's allocated out of that fund to support small business initiatives. And other programs that we are currently using for that fund is our Commercial Rehab and Facade Program. And also, we're utilizing that fund to support ongoing programs that we have already in place for the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. May I get a motion to receive and file? Moved by Councilmember Velpula, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any other discussion? Thank you for your leadership on this, Councilmember Velpula. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Twenty-three dash zero forty-eight is a communication from the City Manager with a request to approve a redevelopment agreement with Fulton Hotel Development. And on your desk, there is a handout of an ordinance approving the redevelopment agreement.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a redevelopment agreement that comes before you from Fulton Hotel Development LLC. That LLC has been formed by Keith Weinstein of Greystone Realty to redevelop a project site that includes the Sully's Building and the ICC Pearly Building. The existing structures will be demolished and a mixed-use development will be constructed on the site. The project would include a hotel with 140 guest rooms, a residential lobby, meeting conference facilities, swimming pool and a fitness center, 50 residential apartments, restaurant-related bar facilities, and some convenience retail. The total project is estimated to be over $57.1 million, with roughly about a quarter of that being qualified TIF-eligible expenses. The city would reimburse the redeveloper 100% of its qualified redevelopment costs for the remainder of the life of the TIF, but only out of the tax increment that's generated on the project site. The properties are included in the Downtown Conservation TIF, which is planned to expire in 2036. So if the hotel opens in 2027, that would be nine years of reimbursement. With the nine years of the TIF, it's unlikely that all the reimbursement expenses, redevelopment expenses, would be reimbursed out of the property taxes paid in the TIF. There's been a lot of talk about this hotel being, or project and this redevelopment agreement being very agreement being very similar to the Pier Marquette, and I want to make it very clear, they are two completely different projects. The Pier is a project that, where the hotel was connected to the Civic Center, and the city granted the redeveloper $29 million, and then gave a $7 million loan to complete the project. Here, all of the TIF funds generated by property taxes paid by the project would be reimbursed to the developer after construction. So I want to make that very clear. And if the development doesn't proceed and no increment is generated, there is no increment to be generated or distributed to the redeveloper. The city would also, as part of this redevelopment agreement, extend the Hospitality Improvement Zone Business Development District to include the project, which is consistent with all of our downtown hotels. That includes a 1% sales tax and hotel tax that's used to reimburse hotels and hoteliers for the capital expenses that they incur on the, in their projects and in their developments. If the development doesn't proceed and no hotel tax or sales tax is generated, there is no hotel tax or sales tax to be redistributed to the developer. The City Niagara Parking Deck will be available to users of the project in accordance with the contract, which will allow for 140 parking spaces for the hotel and 80 parking spaces for the 50 residences. The redeveloper will pay to the city a parking fee equal to $3 per occupied room night on a monthly basis with a 3% escalator built in. The residential apartment tenants would contract directly with the city or its agent based on our usual customary practices, and those costs would be applied from time to time as, as normal deck users would be. So if our monthly charges go up, those charges would go up. If the development proceeds, the Niagara Deck will be nearly full. Without the development, it will stay in its current form, which is roughly at about 30% capacity. There's three milestone dates built into this redevelopment agreement. The developer has agreed to completion of the construction plans by April 1st of 2024, commencement of construction by January 1st of 2025, and construction completion by January 1st of 2027. If the developer doesn't meet those milestones, they can ask for, and the council would have to grant here on the floor of the council, a six-month extension to those milestone dates. So that's something that council would have to approve. If, after those milestone dates are not met, or if the developer doesn't meet those milestone dates as extended, the agreement shall terminate upon written notice by the city to the redeveloper. Lastly, Sully's Building has been recognized and identified as a contributing structure in the downtown Peoria Historic District and is recognized on the National Register of Historic Places. The TIF Act prohibits reimbursement for certain costs if they are used to demolish, remove, or substantially modify a historic resource. However, there is an exception to that prohibition, which provides that such prohibition applies unless no prudent or feasible alternative exists. The developer has submitted documentation to us that represents that the structure's obsolescence and disrepair is such that there is no prudent and feasible alternative other than demolition for this. The redevelopment agreement, as it's laid out, puts the risk of that compliance with the TIF Act onto the redeveloper, including the fact that the city shall have no liability to the redeveloper if it is determined that the redeveloper is not entitled to that TIF reimbursement payment. And in that event, the redeveloper is responsible for reimbursing the city for any payments that we may have made to the developer. In short, the risk of demolition is borne entirely by the redeveloper. In conclusion, the proposed redevelopment agreement is completely different from the Pier Marquette Hotel Project, and with reimbursements to the developer happening after completion of the construction, the risk of the development is borne by the redeveloper, not the city. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have. I know that, that we also have representatives of the redeveloper here. Mr. Tom Leider is also here in the audience as well.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a matter of clarification, the Pearlie Building currently is tax-free, real estate, I'm sorry, real estate tax-free. It is, has value, but it is tax-free. Will it start at zero? It will not start at its real value. Or at least the land, I know the building's going to be torn down, but we're saying that the land value is zero?
Since, since the Pearlie Building is owned by a public entity and that assessed value is zero, the base value, and it was operated by ICC when the TIF was established in 2013, the base is zero for purposes of that. So all total, the, the total value, base value of the assessed value of the two parcels, the ICC Pearlie Building and the Sully's Building, is about $15,600 is the total assessed value between both buildings.
But that's only one building.
$15,600.
All right. No sense? I'm sorry.
You'll have to ask Max Schleifli about that.
Okay. But that's only the Sully's Building?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. And we're sure that that's the way it would work. It's...
It's the way it's worked in the past.
Okay. Thank you, Madam, thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. I'm going to ask the representatives of the project to come forth, and if you would tell us your affiliation, your name and affiliation, and any additional insights that you want to provide tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Tom Leider. I'm an attorney here in Peoria, and I'm pleased to represent the developing entity here, Fulton Hotel Development LLC. And first of all, I'd like to say that this is a serious project. It has been under development for several years. The developers have invested millions of dollars, literally, and committed millions of dollars, both in the development of architectural plans, engineering plans, contracting with professionals, professional management companies, market research companies, and have a contract to purchase the ICC Pearlie Building. And in that purchase agreement, they also have committed substantial earnest money deposits, which are at risk in this project. So it's a serious project and has been vetted by professionals. They have engaged the services of Commonwealth Hotel Management Company out of Covington, Kentucky, as the management partner. They have employed hotel leisure advisors to do feasibility and market research. The most recent report, which I received today, is a 2023 report, a January report, that supports the feasibility of the project. They have committed to the Hilton Hotel chain to make this a Hilton Garden Inn, the flag of the hotel. And the hotel is different in many respects from the Pier Marquette, as Patrick stated, but it's different in the marketing aspects of it as well. It's considered to be a select service hotel, not a full-service hotel like the Pier Marquette or the, the Sheraton product. It's a limited service hotel. It does not have a ballroom, it doesn't have convention facilities. It has some meeting rooms, it does that, it has a restaurant, but it's intended to hit a price point that is different than a full-service hotel. Now, Patrick mentioned and distinguished this project from the Pier Marquette and the commitment that the city made to the Pier Marquette. We really shouldn't even be discussing this in the same conversation because it is so radically different. The developers are not seeking any money from the city. There is no risk to the city in this project. That's an important thing to point out. The benefits to the developer in this will be the use of the tax increment financing district, so that taxes, the incremental taxes paid by the hotel, would then be reimbursed to a certain extent to the developer over the period of the TIF. So that's the benefit that the developer gets from the city. But that does not place the city at any risk financially or any contingent risk. There is simply no risk. I'd also like to point out that, and it has been pointed out, that the Pearlie Building is a non-taxable property currently, so there's no tax being generated by that property. The, the use of the parking deck, that's, it's a beneficial thing for the hotel, of course, because there's an existing parking deck there, and that capital investment does not have to be made by the developer. That's, that's a helpful thing, and it's one of the reasons why this property was identified as a, as a site, because we have access to an underutilized parking facility. But the hotel is paying for that benefit. The negotiated rate is $3 per occupied room night. Now, that's significant because from the developer's standpoint, it's based upon hotel occupancy, really not even parking lot use. For purposes of budgeting, marketing, and so forth, the hotel is willing to pay $3 per occupied room night, and many of those occupants may not be driving a car. If they're here on business, they may not have a car to park in the deck, but they're still willing to pay, and it helps them in budgeting, and it's a, it stabilizes the, the revenue from the standpoint of the budgeting process and marketing. It's possible, who knows what will happen here, it's possible that the hotel would choose to actually include that cost in the room rate so that it would not appear as if the occupant and the guest at the hotel has to pay extra for the hotel, in a similar fashion to a suburban hotel where they, where the parking lot is owned by the hotel property and they're not charging for parking. So that's a possibility, but in any event, the city will be getting the $3 per occupied room night on a monthly basis. So in conclusion, I would say the project is a serious one, it's been well-planned. The feasibility has been established through, by professionals. Management partners are involved in this that are well-recognized management hoteliers, and there is no risk to the city. That really sums it up, and I think it's what we call, refer to commonly as a win-win, frankly. I'd also like to point out that the, that the developer is committed to putting in all of the public investment in infrastructure from Fulton Plaza to Main Street. There are going to be requirements for new paving, sidewalks, probably utility relocations that also include some of the Niagara Alley improvements, and there's another alley in back of these properties. But the, the developer and the plans that will be ultimately submitted to the city for approval will include all of those expenses at the developer's expense and not the city. So the developer is willing to make public improvements, which will enhance the entire frontage from Fulton Plaza to Main Street.
Thank you. Thank you for that summary. We may have a few questions for you. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Leider, for being here this evening. Just a couple of questions. How many years left on the current TIF district? And a lot of these TIF districts have extension. Can you talk to us about the extension? Would the, the developer qualify for the extension, the revenue from the extension from the TIF?
Well, I believe there's approximately nine or 10 years left on the TIF.
Maybe I can answer that for you, Mr. Leider. The, the TIF expires in 2036, and the, the only process, the only mechanism by which an extension of the TIF is granted is by an act of the Illinois General Assembly. So the City Council would have to make a determination, just like we've, we've done in the past with other TIFs. This council would have to decide if they want to extend the TIF, and then they would have to work to get legislation introduced in Springfield. We would have to generally, as our practice is right now, get the sign-off on all the taxing bodies that would be affected to agree with an extension of the TIF in order for that to go forward. That bill would then have to be passed by the General Assembly and signed by the governor, and that would provide a 12-year extension on the TIF. But one other thing I want to point out with extensions like that, it doesn't mean that there would be 12 additional years of qualified redevelopment expenses that would be paid. Once the qualified redevelopment expenses have been exhausted, there's no more reimbursements to the developer. As I mentioned earlier, there's probably roughly a quarter of the costs in this, in this proposed plan that would qualify as redevelopment expenses, because most of the construction is new construction, which is not eligible under the TIF Act. So what that means is that once they've met that full requirement, we're going to calculate with the project how much they're actually eligible for reimbursement. Once that's met, there's no more reimbursement that would come. Once the TIF is concluded, there's no more reimbursement that would come from that either.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Ruckrico?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question for Mr. Leider, and then I've got a question for City Manager Euric. Mr. Leider, you happened to mention, I believe, a Hilton Garden Inn, and, and was going to be maybe the flagship that was going to be at that hotel that's proposed, if, if everything goes forward as, as proposed. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear all that.
You had mentioned a Hilton Garden Inn was, was right now, the thought process was that would be the, the brand that would be at the proposed hotel if everything would go forward as, as outlined here?
That, that is the current plan, that this would be flagged as a Hilton Garden Inn. And those arrangements have been made at this point. Of course, it's still early in the game, but that was, that's the plan that would go forward as a Hilton product.
And, and that kind of caught my eye in, I guess, the process, because as we continue to market ourselves as a conference destination and be able to, to market ourselves for everything from the Civic Center to even our other entities that have ballrooms and things here, one of the things that I think comes up a lot of times is what affinity, and we've got some wonderful properties that are under Bonvoy Group, but currently downtown, we don't have anything under the Hilton brand. So that, I think, brings something in those, and a lot of companies are tied to those rewards programs and try to have people stay there. So what I'm hearing is this is an alternative to, to what we currently have, and so it's an addition enhancement, would you say?
I would say yes, and these are, these kinds of things are taken into account by the professionals as they look at the market. It does give, distinguish from an existing product that exists here in this market. And that's the sort of thing that the professionals, hotel leisure associates have looked at in their marketing.
Great. Thank you. City Manager, can you tell us how long the Sully's property has been not doing business, I guess?
I, I think it's probably since 2014 or 15, and that area there was, was when operations ceased. I, I think that's about the timeframe.
And from what, from what we've seen from the condition of the building and from your communication, currently, the building as is, is unusable and probably not remodable?
I, you know, I think that's, that's certainly the, the representations of the, of the developer, and, you know, with, without having anyone actually active in the space, it certainly does cause it to, to continue to deteriorate over time.
You mentioned that this deal obviously is, is different than the Pier deal, and, and so talking about the deal that we have in front, in front of us to be able to consider tonight, one of the things is the length of the TIF district that is remaining. In our earlier conversations, you know, we talked about that, right now, if everything would hit on these target dates, we're looking at about nine years that there would be TIF-eligible dates that they could pay back. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. I think we're, we're looking at if, assuming that, that the milestones are met and that construction is completed by January 1 of 2013... and that construction is completed by, um, January 1 of 2027, then you're going to have those, those years, the taxable years of, of reimbursement would be about nine years that they would be eligible for, for that reimbursement period until the TIF expired.
So would it be safe to say that even though we have, um, some contingency dates placed in here, that I guess the setup that you've created here would behoove the developer to be able to, I guess, hit the ground running as soon as he can on this project? Because the sooner he gets open, the longer he can, um, participate in those TIF reimbursements?
Absolutely. The, the, I think that, that the incentive to open up, you know, and get construction started and completed, uh, is really with the developer.
One of the things that, you know, I've talked about on other projects is where the developer gets paid. And traditionally, I'm, I'm one of those that thinks the developer gets paid last when everybody else, not, not in the front of the project. And it seems the way that you've structured this, that really is how this is. The developer gets paid once this gets opened and for the subsequent years. Is that correct?
That, that's correct from the city's perspective. You know, however that's structured with the, the, the construction and financing and, and how that, that's structured within the, the developer's hands is with him and his bank. I mean, this is ultimately how we reimburse our, um, TIF reimbursements come out after the fact. So after the project is open and, and construction is completed, then those reimbursements would come forward.
But we're not cutting a check the day the hotel opens. Those payments are coming for whatever the remaining part of that TIF, whether that be nine years or seven and a half years or whatever's left.
Correct. So, so after we collect the, the, well, after the county collects the property taxes and those distributions are made into the TIF account, we would then, the finance department would work to make sure that the redeveloper was reimbursed. And, and the, and the redeveloper, as part of the agreement, has to, has to state that here's the qualified redevelopment expenses, and they would submit that form to us asking for that reimbursement, which is what we do on all of our redevelopment agreements.
And I guess one just question, thought process. The closer you get to the end date of a TIF maturity, how, I'm assuming it's less likely to be able to be picked up. You know, if you get three years within a TIF deadline, uh, probably you've missed that window of opportunity to be able to, to really have it take effect. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, I, I think that, you know, as your window gets, gets shorter with, when, within the conclusion of the TIF, there's, there's less opportunity to recover all of your redevelopment expenses that are, that are part of the project.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Leiter, I want to, you, thank you and, and, uh, Mr. Weinstein and the group for, um, bringing this forward. I know City Manager's been involved as well. I mean, it's clear that we are in desperate need of investment, um, in this block or a couple blocks in the city with Solis having been vacant for at least eight years, as well as, um, the ICC building being empty. So, um, I mean, I commend Mr. Weinstein for sticking with the project. I know he's been, um, trying to put this together for a number of years. I do have some questions, um, and I know, Mr. Leiter, you and I discussed this from earlier today. Can you talk about how the feasibility study shows that there is a need for additional hotel rooms for the city? Because I know, you know, because of COVID and other things, we've had a lot of vacancies in our hotels downtown. So I think the public and myself were concerned as to whether or not we really need this hotel.
First of all, I'm, I'm not personally an expert in these areas, but, uh, the developer has hired experts. And the company that has, uh, done the most recent market feasibility study is a company by the name of Hotel Leisure Advisors. And they, the study that I received, actually today or yesterday, so it's a, it was in this past month, concludes that this particular product, uh, this hotel in this location, this flag, will, uh, sustain itself through an occupancy level that they determine, uh, is appropriate. I think around 70%, that might be the number that is, uh, is used by them. And they distinguished, uh, this product from the other hotels, the convention-type hotels. And their conclusion, the expert conclusion, is that there is a need for a hotel of this type and that, uh, can't really compare a convention hotel to a hotel of this type. You know, we've actually seen, I mean, uh, we observe, uh, new hotel construction in East Peoria, just across the river, for example. And some of those hotels might, are perhaps comparable to this. So there, there's clearly a demand, uh, for new hotel rooms. I believe it's the type of hotel rooms, uh, that distinguishes this. And, uh, so that, that is the conclusion, the professionals, and, and I, I know that the, uh, management partners, Commonwealth and so forth, have agreed that, yes, this, there's a need for this, and they're, they're willing to put their money there.
I guess as a follow-up, I don't know if, um, Mr. Yurk knows. It, it's my understanding that maybe the, um, um, the tourism, uh, organization has also done some feasibility studies on the need as well in the Civic Center for...
I, I think that the, the Convention and Visitors Bureau has been monitoring our, our hotel occupancy in the region, and, and, you know, they're pleased to report that, that our occupancy has been going up. You know, as I think Mr. Leiter said, you know, East Peoria had a, had a Suites Hotel that opened up in 2021 in the middle of the pandemic. And I, you know, I mean, I think that it shows that there's probably, um, some certain, uh, amount of demand for hotels right now within the region. And I think that, that that's something that, um, the market will bear out. The private market will bear out whether or not, you know, this is warranted. And I think that that's something that, um, will, you know, it, it's certainly, uh, going to go forward. I don't believe that the city's at risk in terms of approving this development. It's just as if this was, uh, instead of 140 hotel beds and 50 apartments, it was a 190 apartment unit building, and we were putting that here. I mean, it, the, the developer has a certain amount of risk in, in terms of putting that type of investment together, so.
On that same note, can you talk about the studies that have been done that show that the city needs more residential units downtown? And what that number is?
Yeah, absolutely. We've had, uh, through the Downtown Development Corporation, they've had a number of studies that have been performed that have looked at, at the demand for, um, residential units in the Central Business District and the Warehouse District. Tracy Cross was one of the studies we've had done recently. And it shows that we could absorb 200 units a year of new apartments, uh, in downtown in the Warehouse District. So, uh, I think that that absorption rate, you know, this adds to that mix. We, we've got some interest still in the Warehouse District, and, and there's, there are units that are under construction right now. So, um, this certainly will help to add to a, a, a different, uh, type of new construction of hotels versus, uh, the renovation of warehouses that we're seeing in the Warehouse District.
And, and my understanding is we're almost at 100% occupancy for what, for the residential units that we do have available in the Warehouse District and downtown?
We are, we are doing, uh, very well when it comes to residency and, and in our occupancy of, of our apartments in downtown in the Warehouse District. So hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to see more products coming online soon.
Okay. And I do have, um, I know I'm going over time, but a couple of questions about, um, the status of the building and its, um, historic, um, designation. From what I read, the developer hasn't, has the developer talked to the state and the National Board about whether or not this, um, prohibition's going to be waived for the demolition costs and things? Or where is that at, I guess?
I could address that, uh, Councilman. Uh, we were aware when we, uh, embarked on this that a contributing structure within the downtown historic district, uh, has certain limitations with respect to TIF reimbursement for certain specified costs, uh, of such a building. And you can't get reimbursement for demolition for sure. However, the statute, this is a state statute issue. It's not simply a permissive thing from the, uh, Department of, you know, Historic Preservation, Historic Preservation Agency. This is a matter of law, because it's built right into the TIF statute. And it says that, uh, that prohibition or that limitation applies only if there is no feasible, uh, alternative, uh, to demolition. And that has been interpreted to be basically an economic decision, uh, whether it's, it's feasible or not. And knowing that, we employed, uh, James Kemper, Kemper DeMonica Architects, last year, early in the summer, to conduct, uh, an evaluation of this property and its alternative uses and whether or not it is a candidate for rehabilitation. And those architects concluded that it is not feasible to rehabilitate this building. And that information has been provided to the city. The analysis done by, uh, James Kemper, architect, uh, it's very detailed. It, uh, goes through the costs associated with rehabbing, the total investment that was, would be required, and also takes into account the marketability and the market value of the building once that investment is made. And it's obvious when you look at this report that this building is not a candidate for rehabilitation and therefore qualifies for the exception in the TIF statute.
But have you had any discussions with the, the state or the federal organization that has to approve that?
Well, I'm not sure. There's nothing in the statute that requires them to approve it.
Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't give them the right to approve or disapprove. Okay, so the, the statutory language is, uh, as I've said, what it is. If, if the building is not economically feasible for rehabilitation, then that prohibition doesn't apply. The statute does not say that, uh, some agency has to approve it. Now, would we like the agency to review it and, and agree with us? Yes, we would. We believe they will when they see the facts, when they, when they do that analysis. But, um, and the agreement, the TIF agreement that we have, uh, negotiated with the city puts that risk on the developer.
And I, yeah, I understand that. I guess I'm just concerned that, that the developer hasn't taken that step yet to go to the, the state agency. You know, and that could, that can take, I know with my experience with historic preservation, um, commissions, it could take months, if not, I mean, it could take a year, so this could slow down the project. And then what happens if they say, no, you can't do that? Then...
Then we would have a, uh, we'd have to deal with the agency that took that position, and that would be the risk of the developer. We're so confident that that conclusion is going to be sustained. It's a, it's a question of fact and not judgment. It's, it's, it's not a judgment issue, and it's not a matter for the discretion, uh, of the agency to decide if it's, if they agree or don't agree. That doesn't mean that we're going to get into an argument with them. We don't intend to get into an argument with them, but it's a factual analysis.
So Hayes, did you want to interject here?
Sure. Just if I could add, I share your concerns and experiences with the State Historic Preservation Office. And, uh, I requested, I informed Mr. Leiter of our concerns and have, with his acquiescence, reached out to the State Historic Preservation Office, uh, for input and guidance on this. And he's agreed, and we've agreed to cooperate in that process going forward. So the State Historic Preservation Office, um, responded to our inquiries and has indicated that they will likely undertake a review and help assist with that determination on the eligibility of the TIF reimbursements. And so that's a process that may have some hurdles. Fortunately, given the timeline of this, we have time to go through those. Previously, in my experience, there's been a period of marketing. They may recognize the period of, of idleness to satisfy that or may require a period of marketing in order to arrive at that outcome. We think the developers incentivize to seek that in order to reimburse, get reimbursed or at least be eligible for the reimbursement and the demolition costs. These are not impossible or insurmountable elements, but they take some time. Fortunately, this, um, uh, project has some time involved that where we could do that sort of collateral to all the other efforts that the developer will be making in, uh, developing the construction plans for the business. Thank you.
And, and thanks for that response. So I assume, I shouldn't assume, but the, the city's not going to be doing any reimbursement until it gets the, the, the okay from the state that it, it is excluded from that prohibition?
Uh, in fact, I, none of the reimbursements are due until there's a certificate of occupancy for the building. And so that's when they first become eligible for any reimbursements. So, uh, there might be some increment collected before that on a partial assessment or something, but those, they're not eligible for reimbursement until the building's open to the public.
Okay. Thank you.
Good questions. Councilmember Allen?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just a, a couple of questions. Just making sure that I understand, um, the, the tax, um, I guess, forecast. So, Mr. Manager, once the county receives the property taxes generated from the asset, it is then, um, sent to the TIF, correct?
It, it, it's sent to our finance department. There are distributions that come into, into the city. They're deposited in the TIF account, and then the, the funds that are generated from the specific parcels in question would be segregated by our finance department just for this...
And reimburse them, uh, for the life of the TIF? And so during the life of the TIF, while we're reimbursing, the city will receive the 1% HRA tax and then the $3 for the parking as well too? So is that the, essentially the only additional income we'll receive during the duration of the TIF?
So, so on this, no. So, so the, the additional 1% is the, is the business district tax for the Hospitality Improvement Zone Business District. That's reimbursed, that's charged by, by the hotelier on guests of the hotel or people, patrons that are buying things in the hotel. And then that's collected by the city, and that's reimbursed to recover costs, capital costs that have been incurred by the hoteliers. Okay? There is still the state sales tax, there's the, the city's sales tax, the county's sales tax. All of those sales taxes are still collected and dispersed to all the taxing bodies. So the, all the other taxes that we have are continued to be collected and dispersed. The developer is only eligible for that 1% to be used to offset capital improvements. The, the parking revenues, what we've agreed to is the three, the $3 parking discount off of our current daily rates of three, of $6. And, and that would be charged to every person staying in the hotel, whether or not they have a car or not in our parking, in our, our parking structure. But then that's going to be rem, you know, paid, um, you know, at that point in time on a monthly basis by, uh, the hotelier is going to be remitting that back to the city. So that's the cost for the parking. And that's really probably the, you know, one of the areas where, where there is really the only kind of subsidy that's really built in for us incenting this development to go forward. Everything else is kind of by right.
And this asset will still be required to pay all standard fees, including the stormwater utility fee?
Still going to have to pay stormwater utility fees, still going to have to pay property taxes, which is where this reimbursement comes from. They're still going to have to pay hotel taxes, they're still going to have to pay their state liquor taxes and the, and the taxes to the city, so all of that's still going to have to be done. Building permits, all of that is still going to have to be paid for.
And I know that it's still early, but do we foresee any type of disruption to any of the small businesses that are surrounding this asset during construction?
Uh, I think you, you, you know, as we look at construction, there's probably going to be some disruption when we get to the point where the buildings are demolished or buildings are constructed. But it's not unlike what we've seen with the, the construction around the, the OSF Headquarters Project. You know, I think people will, will be able to, to work around that and, and, you know, will certainly try and make accommodations for those businesses that are impacted.
Yeah, absolutely. I definitely want to just bring them to the table. A lot of them have weathered the storm during COVID, and so, but this will be a, a bonus to them as well too. So, uh, very exciting stuff. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, um, Madam Mayor. I just had a, one question and maybe a, an observation or comment. Well, um, this sounds like a very exciting product, a project, uh, Mr. Leitner. And, uh, you know, after, uh, what, almost a decade of having or more those two buildings empty, it will be, it's exciting at the prospect. empty, uh, it will be, it's exciting at the prospect of bringing in, uh, a brand new tenant who's going to do something new from the ground up. Uh, I had one question about, uh, the amenities, um, convenience retail, was that, what kind of retail are we talking about?
Very modest. It would be, it would really be, uh, something for the hotel guests, uh, that you see commonly in a hotel where they have a little shop of some kind where there's a, uh, little retail sales, uh...
So it sounds like a small scale then?
A small scale.
Okay, okay.
It's just, it's basically a convenience thing for the hotel guests, but of course it's available too for other residents downtown. And there's nothing here, of course, now. So it, it's something new, but it's not, it's, it's not driving the project.
Okay. Well, the reason I asked, I mean, you know, one, uh, we've got another hotel down, the Pier Marquette with a, a still a bottom floor full of space that was originally planned for retail. So I, I was just kind of wondering about the extent of the retail.
This would, this would be basically a, a space within the existing hotel where they would sell sundries of various kinds, you know, snacks, things like that.
Um, and just one other question. I don't know if you can answer this, Mr. Leitner. I know there were some plans, road redevelopment plans for Fulton Plaza. Does this project in any way, shape or form impact that?
Mr. Manager?
Do we know anything about that or...
Well, I, I think that Mr. Leiter mentioned that, that, um, the, the redeevelper is interested as he builds out his construction plans and possibly looking at, uh, opening up Fulton Plaza. That, that will be something we'll have to discuss with the, the developer as it goes forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. I'm going to, uh, loop back to Councilmember Ruckregal and then turn it over to Councilmember Grab to wrap things up here.
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, City Manager question, because I think Councilmember Jensen, um, had some really good questions here, uh, on timeline and if there are any sort of, um, going through agencies approvals or disapprovals that may come up. Um, and, and I think that's an important piece that, that she brought up. In the agreement, as we have it here, and you've mentioned this before, this six-month extension, they are able to, at any milestone, if notified prior to the milestone, be able to ask for a six-month extension on that milestone, correct?
That is correct.
And that's unqualified. So if all of a sudden this gets caught up in some state agency, um, that, that then, and we go past that extension period, then can you talk to us about what happens with the agreement?
Certainly. So, so what it would mean, for example, with the completion of the construction plans, if that takes, they need a six-month extension, they can request that. And then, uh, the council could approve that six-month extension of, uh, the time to get the construction plans completed. So from April 1 of 2024 to then October 1 of 2024. Same thing when it comes to the approval of commencement of construction. That's the second milestone. That could be extended until July 1 of 2025. And then completion could be extended to July 1 of 2027. After that time period, if that's not completed, council has the right to end the redevelopment agreement. Now, if, obviously, you know, if, if we're talking in the real world, if there's construction that has commenced and there's construction that's going on, it's not likely that we would do that. We would just, there's likely something that council would have a conversation with. But, let's say that, that there has been no construction plan submitted, there has been no start to this work, we get past that second work, it doesn't look like there's a start to the work, council can make the determination that they want to stop this from going forward. That's, that is entirely within the right of the city council to make that as part of the agreement.
Okay. And, and, and I, I think, uh, Councilmember Jensen, and, and she's worked, obviously, for, uh, with our legal department, uh, for years. And so I, I think that her questions are very valid into, you know, what, what happens if? Um, and thank you for that answer. I think we've got a project here in front of us that has little risk for the city, especially as this TIF district, uh, TIF date is moving forward. Um, and it has some hard milestones in here, which, um, are, to be honest, pretty tight. Looking at development timelines, um, things have to move pretty quickly to be able to do that. And I think, um, in talking with, with Mr. Leiter and with the developers, they've, they've planned for those things and I think that they are ready to, to move on this. And if something falls away there, um, the city has very, has no risk really financially in this, uh, from what I'm understanding from you and, and what I'm seeing here. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. With that, it's also a nice private investment that helps really continue the resurgence of our downtown. And I for one believe that Peoria's future for downtown has, has great possibilities. And we have been sort of stymied by two years of COVID, but we got to look back what has happened before that and even during that. And I think that our future is bright. We, we, we see what's happening at the Civic Center, we see what's happening at our, um, restaurant locations down there. They, they're begging for investment to come down to be able to continue that resurgence that they've all believed in. And this, with the residential component as well as the hotel component, really ties the two together, which is, is of interest. We don't, we don't have those two components really coming into the same complex before. Um, so with that, I would request to adopt an ordinance approving the redevelopment agreement, uh, as outlined here in front of us with the Fulton Hotel Development LLC.
Seconded by Councilmember Grab. Uh, additional discussion, Councilmember Grab?
Um, Mayor Lee, um, I would like to give the privilege of the floor to Anthony Carter, uh, who would like to address the council in reference to this, uh, potential redevelopment agreement. Uh, thank you for waiting so long, Anthony. I appreciate it.
Oh, I appreciate the chance to speak. Uh, like you said, my name's Anthony Carter. I've lived downtown since 2008 and keep hearing about how it's going to get better. And so, um, I'm here to represent my friends and neighbors over at Twin Towers Place. And of course, the residents of Twin Towers Place are, that we don't object, we're excited for continued growth in the downtown Peoria area. Um, however, there, there are some, some concerns which don't appear to be adequately addressed in the proposal before the council. And the other concern is that, uh, the current downtown residents have not had any, hadn't, we haven't had any chance to provide input. So I'd like to do some of that now. Um, regarding visibility, uh, the height of the structure proposed as presented looks like it will be a high-rise over twice the height of the adjacent structures. Twin Towers Place, we're proud to be the centerpiece of the iconic Peoria skyline. And, uh, we prize our views in, in the area and would like some assurance that this development would be limited to a more reasonable height, similar to the buildings immediately adjacent to it. And we request that some effort be made to maintain and preserve our beautiful views of the river before you consider obstructing them by placing a large building directly in front of our community. Regarding the infrastructure, the addition of residents and hotel guests will increase demands on the streets, public right-of-ways and parking. There's no discussion of any improvements to infrastructure or a funding mechanism to offset the additional demands on the existing infrastructure. Regarding security, criminal activity and vagrancy in the downtown area should be addressed to assure the safety of all residents in downtown. This location has been a hotspot for homeless camps. There's no mention of what steps are being taken to address those matters. And finally, in regard to the agreement terms, this redevelopment agreement provides very favorable terms to the developer in an area with a 55% hotel occupancy, occupancy rate, one of the lowest in the state. We question why this project is deserving of 100% of the TIF increment when other projects in the warehouse and other TIF districts near downtown have historically been limited to 50% of the TIF increment, despite likely greater need. Shouldn't the city retain some benefit of the increased taxes to support the public infrastructure downtown? The increased strain on parking structures and other infrastructure downtown could benefit from that TIF money. In this particular case, the project is also receiving the BDD tax incentive, providing even more funds to the developer and apparently nothing for, for public infrastructure. Where will the funds come from to maintain the infrastructure in light of the additional demands placed on it? We appreciate growth in the downtown area, but believe there should be more discussion on the needs of the area where these projects are located prior to the agreement being adopted. And I thank you for your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you very much for your input and, um, we are addressing the infrastructure issues downtown and the security issues. I believe in August, we're going to begin work on converting Adams and Jefferson Street to way streets to bring back the vitality for our downtown that's been lost. I believe that as you drive down, uh, Main Street, you will see a change in elevation from Jefferson to Adams. So while it might seem to be enormously high compared to the Twin Towers, it is at a lower elevation. This has come up before in my 23 years on the council when we had the, um, some of the other buildings constructed downtown. If we were to, uh, say that no building could conceivably block the view of anyone living in any one of our buildings downtown, this would put the city of Peoria in a straitjacket and that can't be done. What I'm hearing from people who live downtown and people who have invested millions downtown is that it's time to get our city moving again. And that's why I seconded the motion with a great deal of pride and I ask the council to approve this tonight.
Councilmember Velpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have one clarification question, uh, maybe City Manager you can address or anybody can address. So basically, what I understood was the, um, the competition concerns were addressed. And, uh, I, I understood that, uh, the differentiation between this hotel with the Pier Market. And I also now realize that this is going to be in the budget to mid-range hotel. So can you just throw some light on the apartments as well? So are they going to be budgeted apartments or high luxurious apartment or mid-range apartments? The 50 that we're going to build?
Uh, maybe, maybe I can ask Mr. Leiter if, if he could answer. My understanding is that these are going to be market-rate apartments that, that are going to be going into the, to the, uh, project.
Uh, yeah, the apartments, 50 units which are planned, uh, are certainly market-rate apartments, uh, because they'll be served with amenities that most apartment buildings don't have. Uh, they have the access to the, uh, restaurant facility in the hotel, uh, the other amenities that are within the hotel, the fitness center, the swimming pool and so forth. So these are, these apartment units are certainly going to be market-rate or if not slightly higher than market-rate because of the amenities associated, uh, with these units. So these units are going to be somewhat distinguished from the normal unit that is, that exists in, uh, in the city. But the market researchers believe that there is a market for that. That is a, a, literally a full-service apartment unit, uh, that most new apartments don't have, or the, the reconstructed apartments in the warehouse district don't have those types of amenities. Uh, so I would say that these, uh, units are going to be market-rate, above market-rate, slightly above market-rate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I've agonized a little bit over this one over the last few days, um, debating a couple different things. First of all, it's somewhat abnormal that we would approve an RDA at this point in the process. Normally, it's a lot further along and, and some of these other boxes have been checked and we know that we're a lot closer to a shovel-ready project. And so it, it makes me a little bit nervous tying up a property that could go on to some other use. Uh, the other thing being that we do live in the shadows of the Pier Marquette hotel situation, even though most of us weren't here at that time, um, it has affected all of us, but this is a very different project from that. Significantly from the standpoint of financial impact to the city, we're not outlining anything to make this happen. And so, you know, and looking over the plans here and discussing it with the developer, a couple of things really stand out to me. It's the fact that we've got a parking deck that isn't utilized, that costs us significant amounts of money every year to maintain and financially subsidize. And this is an opportunity to use those spaces at a monthly cost to cover the costs of these parking decks that we talk regularly about the fact that we don't have the money to maintain. The developer has committed to putting money into our infrastructure that we would normally be paying for. And he's taking that cost on himself, which would be against the, um, I guess what I would see, his usage of redevelopment expenses is not only are we saving money in how he's handling the project, but we're also deferring maintenance and capital investment costs, assuming this project goes through. And just to reiterate again, there's no direct city investment. The only way that the developer gets paid is if the project gets completed, the sales tax levy is adjusted, the revenue is collected off of those sales tax dollars and the qualified expenses are turned in to us. So at no point is there any financial investment risk to us that we put the taxpayers at risk for. So that makes me favorable towards the project. Uh, from a downtown development corporation standpoint, not, not speaking on behalf of the corporation, but in my capacity as a member and its vice chair, our focus has been on how do we start to revitalize the downtown business district? And I think this could be an integral part of that, assuming that the process is completed. Having more residential living in downtown is a key part of that. And as, uh, City Manager mentioned, we've completed studies on it showing the vacancy rates in the business district. And a big solution to that is going to be residential living in some of the currently commercial properties. And I think that this will show us how resident, mixed-use residential living works with commercial in a downtown business district area. So this will be an important testbed case for that. A couple of things that I also want to mention from the financial standpoint, I heard the question about the 100%. The difference in that compared to other developments is that they start earlier on in the TIF district process. So the increment that they have the ability to collect is over a longer period of time. In this case, with a potentially only nine-year usage of the TIF district, 100% for those nine years still comes in at less than what many of the developers in other parts of the city have gotten with smaller increment numbers because they've had 20-plus years to collect on them. However, I do have extreme concern with timeline and wanting to make sure that this stays on timeline and that we are not committed to this for the long haul. This property is an extremely important piece of a vision for the downtown business district and it has sat vacant and unused for far too long. We have OSF across the street who has invested tens of millions of dollars in this area. And to have this piece of property hung up for a decade more, waiting on things to go through is not an acceptable answer to me either. So I will look very unfavorably on extensions to the timeline because if it doesn't look like this is going to go through, then we need to get this property moved on to its next highest and best use. And as I told the developer today, I definitely will never be in favor of any stock gap funding for this project. The only incentives will be the increment that's made off of that property and we will not get into a situation where we're trying to fund something at the end of the day. So at the end of all those comments, I will be voting in favor of the project and hopefully we'll be watching. Thank you.
With that, we have a motion on the floor to approve the agreement. We have a second. No more discussion. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously.
Twenty-three dash zero four-nine is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Council with a request to approve a resolution providing for the surrender of the SNET trademark.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to turn it over to our Corporation Counsel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the members of the council know, the SNET trademark was a subject of a lot of discussion last year. One of the issues that occurred was that the city received the assignment of the trademark from Mary Lee on March 10th, 2022. Since that time, the city's legal department had struggled with regard to perfecting the recordation of that assignment with the Patent and Trademark Office. There are a couple of evolutions of naming issues that were corrected by staff at the direction of the Patent and Trademark Office. In late December, the city received an additional notification that there was an issue with the recordation of that interest. So the, on review of those materials, subsequent owner interest was revealed, favoring Brandy Bryant, who is Mary Lee's daughter. Mary Lee did not recall having included her daughter as a subsequent owner, had an informed staff of that. In the interim, I have discussed this matter and consulted with patent expert attorney, and I've come up to a recommendation after consultation with the members of the council, as well as the mayor and Ms. Bryant. And that would be for the city to surrender its interests, have Ms. Bryant surrender her interests, and if necessary, Mary Lee would execute a surrender. I don't know whether that'll be required, and that's why that's that way in the resolution. We would, through my office, retain appropriate counsel to handle this matter so that there would be no additional disruptions with regard to the recordation or the surrender of that interest. It would put the city and all parties in a position that the trademark had never been requested of the Patent Office or granted. That was arrived at after consultation with many of the members of the council, who expressed that there was likely no further interest in the city proceeding with that SNET trademark in any way in the future. This would allow the city to conclude the matter finally with regard to all issues and move on without deferring that issue to further maintenance. Maintaining a trademark requires some vigilance and some additional filings on a five-year basis. There are some alternatives to this, but this was the central set of thoughts that I felt expressed as best I could, the interests of the councilmen. Obviously, there are some divided views on this, about how best to proceed from here. My recommendation, and what's reflected in that resolution, is my sense of what gathers the most from all the different viewpoints on how to resolve things from here. As Mary Lee will be abstenting from this vote and debate, she may answer some questions, but I'd be happy to answer any of your questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Corporation Counsel, can you please outline what those alternatives are that you referenced in your commentary?
Sure. The city could proceed to attempt to properly record the transfer to the city and then completely hold this. Ms. Bryant has indicated she would accommodate that request as well. That does not address the central set of questions from the councilmen about what are we going to do with this thing, and a couple very direct questions of how do we dispose of this if we do perfect that? The other option is to do nothing. If the city did absolutely nothing, the trademark would expire in about three years. We would get a notice that it was expiring, and that if we didn't do anything, it would automatically expire. That's assuming that nobody else, including Ms. Bryant, did anything. So we could do absolutely nothing going forward. As the Corporation Counsel, I don't like the idea that the city would be getting legal notices and not responding. So rather than be accused in the future by somebody with an alternative viewpoint, I felt that presenting an outcome that would create finality would be the best way to resolve this. So that, doing absolutely nothing is an option. Perfecting the transfer, the assignment from Mary Lee by resolving the subsequent ownership interest is another option. Or surrendering the item entirely, as long as Ms. Bryant and, if necessary, Mary Lee cooperate with that, is a third alternative, and that's what's encompassed in the resolution. Thank you.
One more question. Do you believe that any of these solutions bear additional legal or financial risk?
I think the way to resolve any risks most immediately would be to execute on the surrenders. There are some limited expenses by retaining competent counsel to do that. I would insist on that from this point, given some of the input from the council members about where we find ourselves. So I don't want to rely on the lawyers in my department any further. I don't want to rely on my own very limited experience in this arena. I think it's time to hire specialty counsel, so there's some legal exposure to cost there. But I think this is the way to completely resolve any future risks nearly immediately upon the surrender documents being filed. Thank you.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Corporation Counsel Hayes, do you have within your budget to properly acquire outside counsel?
Yes. As a regular part of the business practices of the legal department, we retain outside counsel for any number of legal matters, and that's within the authority of the legal department to, in this instance, to select and retain counsel for that purpose. If counsel wants input on that, that would be unconventional, but I'd be happy to entertain any input counsel would have. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm in favor of this resolution. I think it's best to sunset this matter. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion for approval. Thank you.
Is there a second? Councilmember Jackson?
I am seconding the motion.
Okay, that's what your light was about?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Further discussion? Councilmember Grab?
Corporation Counsel, what is the benefit to us proceeding with the surrender? If you could just repeat it again, we're not lawyers.
Yes.
That's my next life.
Each time we move forward with attempting in another phase to resolve the transfer requires us to pay a filing fee with the Patent and Trademark Office. There's no filing fee for the surrender item. So in that regard, it's less expensive, but because we're retaining counsel, we'll be spending some money on that. I think, as I've mentioned, legally resolving all issues now by surrender relieves future counsel of the obligation to figure out what's going on here, and relieves staff of the burden of maintaining the trademark, which takes some effort and, in the future, some expense. So again, providing finality to this and moving on was why I formed the resolution the way I did, and that's after discussing it with each of your colleagues on the council.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Corporation Counsel, the impression I had as to how this issue was going to be resolved is perhaps mistaken. Here's what I thought was going to be happening, that Mayor Ali and Ms. Bryant would transfer their ownership of this trademark to the city, and the city would surrender it. First of all, am I correct, and did I misunderstand something along the way, or was that at least one of the options?
So half and half. When I originally approached this issue was to perfect the transfer, to have Ms. Bryant transfer the interest to the city. But I spoke to each of the members of the council, and one of the dominant inputs was, let's finish this thing. What are we going to do with it? How do we get rid of it? And that chorus shifted the issue from perfecting the transfer to achieving the surrender as soon as possible. And so that's how I satisfied as best I could the middle of all the issues between all the inputs, and that's why there was a shift from the transfer to the surrender. And all parties, if necessary, would surrender it, just to completely surrender that trademark. Nobody would own an interest in it. The world would be free to adopt those ideas, but the parties involved in this would no longer be involved.
The ordinance reads, "as well as Mayor Ali, if necessary." That does not say that Mayor Ali surrenders it. Now, the reason we're in this fix is that the mayor had this trademark. It was thought to be, it was thought to be a bit of a problem. The mayor was convinced to transfer it to the city. The city would presumably surrender the interest. Then we got a problem with another owner, Ms. Bryant. Okay. So what happened to the idea of bringing it into the city, surrendering it, and it's Instead of the city surrendering its interest, Ms. Bryant surrendering her interest, and the mayor, if necessary?
The Patent and Trademark Office will determine whether the, as yet, unperfected recordation would require the mayor to execute a surrender or not. By executing the surrenders, we achieve the outcome with the lowest cost to the city. In pursuing the transfer, we have to pay additional filing fees. This was the way to short-circuit issues to get all of the ownership interests discarded and the city out of this issue, along with Mary Lee and Ms. Bryant, without any ownership interest existing for any of those three parties with regard to the trademark, at the lowest cost to the city.
First of all, I, as you recall, want to get out of this as cleanly and as efficiently as we can. Does the city currently have an interest in this trademark?
Yes, the mayor has assigned her interest in the city to the trademark. The issue is recording that interest appropriately with the Patent and Trademark Office.
If it's not recorded, is it ours?
I would defer to outside counsel on that matter, and I'd be happy to pursue the answer to that question. The guidance to me was, to achieve the outcome of nobody holding this any longer, executing surrenders would be the quickest way and the least expensive way to that outcome. Now, as a matter of property interest, the mayor's assignment is still, exists, and is something that the city could pursue if necessary, but with this set of alternatives, it's no longer necessary. And the only reason that clause in there with regard to the mayor executing a surrender is out of an abundance of caution if the Patent and Trademark Office takes that position.
All right, but if this hasn't been recorded yet, can we surrender it? That is the city for its, for its part.
That's been the guidance of the attorney that I consulted with, that would resolve the city's interest, the surrender, yes.
Does the city, I don't know. You said that you don't know if the city has an interest.
I didn't say that I don't know if the city has an interest. I said that the city has the assignment from the mayor. As regard to the property interest, the city holds that as it relates to the mayor's interests. We don't hold that property interest as it relates to Ms. Bryant's interest as yet.
I understand.
And the city, I think, is entitled to surrender its interest. I think the Patent and Trademark Office, and so does counsel, thinks that they'll respect that. But if not, out of abundance of caution, so that all issues are resolved, and so we don't have to come back to the council again in the future, that's why that clause is in there. And I apologize if it's causing confusion or concern on your part. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Corporation Counsel, could you just, I think you said this probably more than once, but there's additional fees. In order to perfect the assignment, which we thought we had done, you would need to have an additional application fee of some sort. Is that correct?
That's correct. If we pursued the path of Ms. Bryant assigning her interest to the city, there would be a filing fee for that.
And what was the dollar amount?
I think the filing fee for that is about $160.
And you've told us you're not the expert on patent law, per se, perhaps, but would that be a cleaner way to do that, to perfect that ownership before we give it up? I mean, that, I was prepared to move forward with this surrender, but with the questioning that's going on, it seems like it's getting a little cloudier, so.
That is another way of doing it. It is a more complex path. It will take more time, likely more attorney's fees, and more filing fees. So if that's a preference of the council, to pursue it in that fashion, I'd be happy to come back with an amended resolution reflecting that. But what I am struggling to do, with a series of conversations, in a matter that I've got limited legal expertise, is to try, give my best and simplest advice to this body. So I'm happy for any direction at this point in time, and I thought that the solutions presented were the simplest to get to the outcome, so.
So the action before us would surrender our interest in it, and Ms. Bryant has already signed to surrender her interest in it, and if necessary, Mayor Ali has agreed to.
Ms. Bryant has not executed any documents. Ms. Bryant has not executed anything, because when this issue came up, I started consulting with counsel, and I have not received clear direction on how to proceed. So she has not executed anything. She has indicated her willingness to execute a document, my direction, to resolve these matters as quickly as possible. Thank you.
So by approving this... Theoretically, all three parties would surrender their stake to it, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one question for City Manager, Mr. Hayes. Do we, the city, own any other trademarks beside, I'm assuming, or I should not assume, but our logo?
I believe we have a trademark on our logo that we have.
That's it?
I think that's it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other discussion? As Council Hayes indicated, and for obvious reasons, I'll be abstaining from this vote. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one nay, Kelly, one abstention, Ali.
Twenty-three dash fifty is a communication from the mayor and city manager with a request to adopt an ordinance amending the revised 2023 biennial budget in the amount of $50,000 for matching city funds for the Bloomberg Public Art Challenge, and on your desk, there is a handout of a partner list.
City Manager?
Well, Madam Mayor, would you like to take this item and talk through it?
Yes, I'll take this one. Back in late November 2022, I received an email from Ms. Patricia Harris, who is the CEO of the Bloomberg Philanthropies Foundation, and she was inviting all mayors of cities of 30,000 or higher to apply for a million, up to a million-dollar... up to a million-dollar Public Arts Challenge grant. Of course, you know Michael Bloomberg, who was the former mayor of New York, thank you, New York. After he left, he's very, also a very wealthy man, he has set aside money to help economic development for cities, innovation for cities, to, ways to address civic issues for cities. And in fact, the city had a Bloomberg grant for innovation a number of years ago, with Anthony Corso as kind of being the lead on that. Anyway, this challenge, it was a short, it's a short turnaround. I started pulling together a coalition of art, artists, and arts organizations to try to brainstorm on what would be our public, our civic issue, what would be our public art type of opportunity for Peoria. We brainstormed and came up with some, a strategy. And it took a while to come up with a coalition and a strategy. But you, some of you may remember John Morris, CEO of the Peoria Riverfront Museum, speaking at the Thanksgiving luncheon. And he talked about Peoria being a city of gratitude. That really stayed in my mind and on my heart when we started talking about a civic issue to address with a public art challenge. So what we ultimately came up with was being concerned about mental health issues in Peoria, the mental health issues of adults, but especially the mental health issues of youth in our community. We looked at the Community Health Needs Assessment and saw that there are many youths, as well as adults, suffering from depression, suffering from isolation, attempted suicide or thoughts of suicide. And we wanted to use public art as a means to try to uplift our community. So the title of the project is called "City of Gratitude: Supporting Mental Health Through Public Art." And the coalition, there's another yellow sheet here, it's been an updated list of collaborators that have come together in support of this project, public art project, which is a two-year initiative, that we would actually immerse our community with expressions of gratitude, appreciation, thankfulness, gratefulness. The grant requires, the grant application requires that the community have a cash and possibly a in-kind match. So we started exploring the possibilities for a match for the grant. Of course, the match is only used if the grant is funded. Gilmore Foundation stepped up with a $25,000 cash match. The Peoria Riverfront Museum committed $25,000 in an in-kind match. Unity Point Health, Central Illinois, committed $20,000 in an in-kind match. The Peoria Park District, $15,000. Peoria Public Schools, $10,000. And then there's a correction to Family Corps, it should be $5,000 rather than $10,000 that's listed on the sheet. But the match, if we can get the city to agree to a $50,000 cash match, it would bring our total cash match to $75,000, and our total in-kind match to $75,000, for a total local match of $150,000, or 15% of the requested grant amount. Again, this is to make us competitive in terms of having 15% of the total grant supported locally. But I'd like to, you have some detail there, there's a lot of excitement around this potential project. It's a two-phased approach, where applications are actually due tomorrow. The application is written, hopefully we can include a city match in that application. But there's a two-part. They will narrow the applicants down sometime this spring, and then there's another application that takes place for the finalists in the fall. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess, where is the $50,000 going to come from?
In our general fund, we have funds set aside for contingencies, and this would just come from there. So this is money that we could build. This is a budget amendment, so we're asking for your approval. It would require a two-thirds vote, but this would allow us to go forward with that.
Remind me how much we have for contingencies?
About $90,000.
Huh?
About $90,000.
Okay, so this will take more than half of that?
And then, again, any other, if we come back to you later in the year with another budget amendment, we can take that out of our reserves, so. And again, because just like a budget amendment here, it requires a two-thirds vote of the council to go forward with that.
Thank you.
As the financial report showed today, we have $54 million in the general fund fund balance, so we're in good shape.
Thank you.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Jensen answered, asked my question about where were the $50,000 coming from, so thank you for asking that question. This is very exciting, I think, as Peoria has continued to make its imprint as a hub for art, culture, fashion in the last couple of years. And so I think this is a step in the right direction. So I appreciate the innovation of you looking into this for us, Mayor, and I'm excited to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grayup?
Back in the early 2000s, under Mayor Ransburg, the council had a number of briefings about what's required to have a vibrant city. And we were inspired by the work of Richard Florida, who wrote the Creative Class book. And it says that when a community ceases to value, the type of thing we're talking about here tonight, Mayor, it's like the canary in the coal mine. Art allows us to express our deepest fears, as well as our deepest aspirations as a community. I think it's an excellent use of our money, and I wholeheartedly support it. And if Mayor Ransburg could be here tonight, and there he is right up there again, I've been pointing to the mayoral pictures now for the past couple of meetings, he would be very proud to see that we're continuing along these lines. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for your work on it. So we're right under a deadline to have it in tomorrow.
Right, thank you. Would have brought it to you sooner, but we didn't have it, we had three weeks before, between council meetings, we just didn't have it together enough. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I was, I, my question has been answered, too, I'm assuming. Would this list of local, if we were a recipient, would these folks design the art?
Would they what?
Would they actually design the art exhibits that are listed all throughout?
Be involved in the process in terms of activities, events? There's a, an artistic team that consists of artist Preston Jackson, artist and curator Bill Conger, Rama Suresh, and then a Bradley professor, whose name I can't say right now. But those are the four artistic team members. Then there's an implementation team, and there's 26 collaborators, and this could grow. The list of collaborators were not locked in to just that list.
Well, I think it's a wonderful program, and I hope that we are one of the recipients. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ruckregel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I'm going to be another one of those echoing the same sentiments here. Really, really excited about what you've done here and put together. And I think you talk about the partners that are coming together with the in-kind and the dollar there. But I think when you look on the backside, too, there is a long list, and I would encourage others that may not have it in front of them to be able to see this long list of partners. And you say that that's also going to be growing. I mean, this is, not only are unifying groups that come together to be able to help make this happen, $50,000 towards a million-dollar grant if awarded, that's huge. But I think that the collaboration that you've done up to this point about finding the subject matter that actually matters for our community, and can help unify us around a common cause that is extremely important for our community as we look towards our future as well, and for the benefit, benefit of our whole community. Well done.
Thank you.
And we will, we will wait till that November date to be able to hear the positive feedback that we're going to be getting on this grant.
Sure hope so. Thank you. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and kudos to you for bird-dogging this project. This is, this sounds wonderful, and I certainly hope it goes forward. I have a question. The City of Gratitude: Supporting Mental Health Through Public Art, is that our name, or is that the, does that come from Bloomberg?
The City of Gratitude would be Peoria as the City of Gratitude.
That, that's a wonderful name. That's a wonderful name. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. I think we have a, we have a motion on the floor. Madam Clerk, do we have a motion?
No, we do not.
Councilmember Ruckregel?
Uh-oh, sorry.
No, Madam Mayor, I'd be happy to make this motion to include our $50,000 in for a matching grant on this. And we look forward, as a community, to hear the positive feedback.
Thank you very much. Seconded by Councilmember Velpula. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Something, Councilman Grab?
Mayor, I was just going to say it requires eight, but obviously, we exceeded expectations, so.
Great, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash zero five one is a communication from the city manager and director of community development with a request to concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending existing special use ordinance number 15194 for residential cluster development in a Class R3 single-family residential district to build a duplex with waivers for the properties located at 5723 and 5727 West Woodbrier Lane, Peoria, Illinois.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like, actually, to make a motion to defer this item to our next meeting in two weeks, on February 28th. The Villa Grande Homeowners Association, the engineer, and the developer are still working through some things, but I'm very confident that we'll have this plane landed by our next meeting in two weeks. Thank you.
You're welcome. Seconded by Councilmember Seer. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots to defer. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash zero fifty-two is a communication with request to concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending existing special use ordinance number 15194 for residential cluster development in a Class R3 single-family residential district to build a duplex with waivers for the properties located at 5731 and 5735 West Woodbrier Lane.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This proposal is also housed in the Villa Grande Homeowners Association right next door, so I will be making a motion to defer this item as well for our next meeting, February 28th. Thank you.
Seconded by Councilmember Seer. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots to defer. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash fifty-three is a communication from the city manager with a request for the following. A, to adopt an ordinance to approve the redevelopment plan and project for the proposed Medina Plains Allen Road Business Park Tax Increment Financing District. B, adopt an ordinance to designate the redevelopment project area for the proposed Medina Plains Allen Road Business Park Tax Increment Financing District. And C, adopt an ordinance to approve a tax increment allocation financing for the proposed Medina Plains Allen Road Business Park Tax Increment Financing District. And we'll need separate motions on all three.
Mr. Manager, please.
Thank you. At this point, this is the adoption of the TIF, and I'd be happy to turn it over to Councilman Seer. This is the fifth district, so.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Finally, the last step for this great project that's happening in the fifth district. I want to say thank you to city manager and Mr. Hayes for all their collaboration, and obviously, to school district, Dunlap School District. It was a great, a great time, I guess, to get together and really, really come up with a great deal for the fifth district and for the city of Peoria. I'm looking forward to see what kind of development we'll have in the future. So with this, Madam Mayor, on item twenty-three dash zero five three, letter A, move to adopt this ordinance, the ordinance for the redevelopment plan and project.
Seconded by Councilmember Ruckregel. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Note that Councilman Allen had stepped out. I think you still have time to vote on item A. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Councilman Allen. Item twenty-three dash zero fifty-three, letter B, move to adopt this ordinance, the ordinance again.
Seconded by Councilmember Ruckregel. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last item, item twenty-three dash zero five three, letter C, move to adopt the ordinance again. Thank you.
By Councilmember Ruckregel. Any discussion? Councilmember Ruckregel?
Madam, thank you, Madam Mayor. And while I think that we've had Councilmember Seer say a couple of thank-yous to everybody else, I think a thank you goes to him. I know that this took a lot of time to be able to come up with a resolution on this as well, and so thank you for your work on this. So with that, I will happily second.
All right, any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you also, Mr. Manager, for your work on that initiative. Thank you also, Council Hayes, for your work on that initiative. Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business. Twenty-three dash seventeen is a communication from the city manager and director of information systems with a request to receive and file an agreement with CrowdStrike to provide cybersecurity technology in the amount of $59,106.2.
Thank you. Just for, for council, I think we, you know, the nice thing about this is that the state of Illinois has approached us and said that they'll pay for this item, so we don't have to act on this contract. This is part of some of their cybersecurity work that they're doing. So at this point, what we'd just like to do is just receive and file this item, and we'll move on.
And get a motion to receive and file, moved by Councilmember Kelly, seconded by Councilmember Grab. Any other questions or discussion? Please cast your ballots. Oh, Allen? Allen? Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-two dash two nine three is a communication from the city manager and corporation counsel with a request to adopt an ordinance amending Article 19, Operation of a Cannabis Business, of Chapter 18, Licenses and Miscellaneous Business Regulations of the Code of the City of Peoria.
I'd like to ask the manager, is there any... I'd like to ask the manager, is there any time urgency associated with this? Or could a deferral, could we consider a deferral on this till the 28th?
I, I think if, I don't think there's any pressing time need for council to, to come forward with discussing this item this evening, so I think if council is of the opinion they'd like to defer this item for two weeks, we could certainly do so.
Council Hayes?
Very much, Madam Clerk. I would just encourage the council members to reach out to Deputy Corporation Counsel on these issues if you've got input on the suggestions. The two items were presented today for ordinances for discussion, and so I'd ask you to read the communication and please reach out to Chrissy so that if we need to adjust issues, we can do so for the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Would there be any objection to 30 days?
Oh. I'm shaking, somebody's, okay.
I think we've got a lot of things to work on for the 28th, so I'd like to kick it 30 days and deal with it then. Thank you.
Okay.
So move, move to defer until the first meeting in March.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Discussion, Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think deferring it is appropriate. I think there's some, some nuances, though, I think, that we need to have, especially regarding, you know, the potential of how many we're going to allow in the city and things of that nature regarding dispensaries and licenses and things of that nature. And I don't know if a standard meeting may be the appropriate setting. I think maybe an executive session may be appropriate, just so that way we can really dive into this and really provide appropriate direction for our legal staff. So that was just my input on this, that I think maybe an executive session would be more appropriate, so that way we can really dive into this, see where we land as far as consistence, discussions, and things of that nature, and possibly give you direction, because it seems like, I know we've been kind of kicking this can, and I'm sure you're ready to get it off the road. Thank you.
I, I don't know that that would fit the criteria for executive session, council.
You're right on point, Mayor.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. So we have, Madam Clerk, we have the motion?
Yes, we do. It was moved by Councilmember Euler and seconded by Councilmember Kelly to defer for 30 days.
Thirty days. Okay, any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at new business.
Is there any new business? Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to thank our public work staff, and particularly City Engineer Klaufenstein for her work on the Prospect Arcadia Traffic Calming that we approved earlier. We talk a lot about speeding and how we can control traffic flows, and I think this is a good example of some creative work on her, her part and the part of the engineering team that she oversees using bump outs as one of the ways that we could do this on Prospect. So just appreciate the, the focus to helping calm the traffic in a very critical area. Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I, I'm just kind of following a suggestion by my colleague, Councilmember Seer, and especially over the last, I would say, two or three weeks, I have received quite a few letters from people inquiring about the situation on capital improvements at the Civic Center for the Rivermen. What, have we decided, Councilmember Seer had said something about a discussion, where are we on this?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, yes. I think that, that staff have been working on looking at some options with regards to financing some capital improvements at the Civic Center that would include the ice plant. We, I think, at this point in time, would like to come back to council with a discussion for the, the night of the 28th, to have that conversation with the council in full.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Grab?
No.
Councilmember Grab?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And this is just a reminder that the Glen Avenue Reconstruction Project will soon commence, and we will be having another final public meeting before its commencement at Concordia Lutheran School next Tuesday, one week from today, at 5:00 PM, at 2,000 West Glen Avenue, where Concordia Lutheran School is. Now, this project will impact both residents and businesses along Glen Avenue between West War Memorial Drive and North University Street. We'll have more information about the construction sequence, and we'll have any, entertain any questions that might be important to be answered by having the contractor, the project managers, the engineers, and more there. So that's just a reminder, this is a very important corridor in our city. We have the money to do the infrastructure work. I'm thrilled. So this is the last public meeting before the commencement of this project. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a follow-up question to Councilwoman Jackson's question, the discussion next week, proposals or options for the Rivermen. Will that be a policy session, or are you just coming forward with some agenda items?
I think at this point in time, staff's trying to work to come back to you with a recommendation.
Okay. I guess I thought we were having a policy discussion.
We certainly can, but we'll, we'll come back to you with a, a firm recommendation, and then council can, can certainly react and, and take that and talk through the options.
Okay.
Nothing will be final.
Okay.
Certainly, it's up to council to decide.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I misspoke last time. I meant policy session, not executive session, just for the record. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Stand corrected. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a clarification, number one, I'd like to say thank you for, to my colleague, Ms. Jackson and Ms. Jensen, for asking the question. Mr. Manager, clarification from you, please. When you say staff, I want to make sure that I understand that, and our constituent understand that we had meetings, City Manager, Madam Mayor, Mr. Ruck Regal, myself. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So it's a little bit higher than staff. I just want to make that clarification. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other new business? Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
We have Mr. Jesse McGowan.
Jesse McGowan Jr., 707 East Thrush. There was another one in there, another citizen was asking me to address this issue there too. I don't know if that would be allowed or not.
You do it within your five minutes, you can.
I mean, for his request, this is mine, for his.
I, I can't do a separate one for someone that's not here.
Anyway, I'll go with mine first. This is something I bring up probably about every 10 years, that I think the city council should adopt a policy of allowing, if necessary, if someone wants to, after the citizens have addressed, do you want to respond to that? The policy now is you can't. And the reason why, it's going to bring up my second question, the issue that I have tonight can only be solved by you all. I can't go back to the administration, because Joe and I, we work very well together. By the way, it's not anti-Joe Doolittle, not anti-Regenbach. I brought this to both of them, they're disagreeing with me on it, and only you all can solve this. It concerns the TIF. We have a neighbor of mine participated in TIF before. This time, he's tried to participate. A rule that was established, we had exceptions to that rule, but they're not being allowed anymore, it's going to cost this neighbor of mine $3,000 more to participate in the TIF, because we came up with a policy that a smaller contractor, no other contractor can get any money upfront. We used to allow that, but we stopped doing that. And the reason why we were allowing that is because there were small contractors being frozen out, because they couldn't support those $5,000 to $10,000 windows that they have to put the deposit down on. That's why we said, well, we'll give them some money, the homeowner can get the money upfront on a case-by-case basis. But that wasn't in, in the writing, so now that case-by-case basis is not being observed anymore, so either he has to pay the extra threat $3,100, or he don't get the windows put in. The, the two window companies, both reputable, they won't deposit. The other one says, they send them to, the city sent him to a construction company. This construction company said, yeah, we'll do it without the deposit, but we're going to have to charge you an extra $3,100. That's not right. And the second thing is, the smaller contractors, when we first came up with this TIF, because it's one of the things that I was most adamant about, smaller contractors can't afford that, so that's why we put that in for the smaller contractors. Now, smaller contractors are not participating in the TIF. When I brought that to Tim the other day, I said, Tim, this, we're, smaller contractors are not being frozen out, they're being frozen out, they can't participate. Tim said, well, Jesse, we don't have any smaller nor the contractors. Tim, that's the point. We don't have any smaller nor the contract participating in the TIF because of those reasons. But not so much the contract, it's, this homeowner should not, this man has a real job. He should not have to pay, he goes from $4,700 to $7,800, simply because we are strictly adherent to that rule, rather than doing it on a case-by-case basis. This is why I need someone on the council to step in and say, hey, look here, we, we need to do something about that, that's not right. So you can't say, let's go back to Joe, because Joe, Joe and I worked good on almost everything except this. Tim and I worked good on a lot of things, except this. I just cannot see this man having paid an extra $3,000, and I think this is something y'all should step in and make a comment, somebody say something tonight, hey, look here, don't tell me to go talk to Joe, because Joe and I, we've talked today. So who's going to handle that? The buck should stop with you all. I said, don't stop there, where does it stop? I don't know anybody, there's no way else to go to. At least say, okay, Jesse, we don't, we're going to do it this way regardless, that's fine. If you're going to do it that way, let it be known. That way, we can, you know, we can make it as a part of the interview process for this upcoming at-large city council race, you know, that could be a part of the interview thing. So but to that point, though, this man, he tried all the last year, and because of the same reason, he's turned to two, he told, get two more contractors this year. He's got two more this year for the 470 and the 78. So do, do you say pay the $33,000, or you say go to hell, whatever y'all want to do?
Next, we have Michael P. Olson.
My name is Michael P. Olson, and I live by, with my wife Lori, at 1025 West Teton Drive, Peoria, Illinois. I have to just tell the council, when I was coaching the orig, one of the original teams in Peoria, the Peoria Blades, Pete Bartisbanian was our captain. Some of you elder statesmen and women might remember Pete, he was our city comptroller. And we would practice at, we didn't get to practice at 10:00 in the morning, or we all were working, and we didn't get to practice at 7:00 at night. We let the kids practice first, and then all of a sudden, we get to practice at about 11:00. And Pete would show up about 11:30. I said, Pete, you're killing us. He said, well, yeah, I just got on that budget meeting to get down to City Hall, so now I know how it really works. So he was telling me the truth, anyway, which I, if you know, if you knew Pete, he was, he was, he's, he's, and my dad sometimes gets a lot of credit, but Pete was the original Mr. Hockey in Peoria, did a great job. I'd just like to say, I moved to Peoria in August of '63, 60 years ago, from Escanaba, Michigan, with my mom, dad, and four siblings. My dad took a job in engineering with Caterpillar Tractor Company out at Mossville. All of my family loves Peoria, love it. We have, and we grew up in a great city, Escanaba, up on, anybody up, been up to U.P., I mean, it's just, well, it's just great. It's great June, July, and August. It's a little rougher right now, but I'm sure Mr. Seer can go along with that, too, growing up where he grew up, but we got a lot of chance to skate, anyway. But anyway, and, and we all still reside in this area. We were raised here, and we raised our families here. That is why I'm addressing the council, mayor, and staff this evening. The quality of family life in Peoria has always been very strong in our community. The city, the park district, the schools, I taught 37 years in Peoria schools, proudly at Bergen, Richwoods, and Central. Loved it, loved every day, never thought I went to work one day in 37 years. The hospitals always made Peoria a family-oriented place to live. I do not want to see our, our city lose a 41-year staple in our community. That provides good, affordable family entertainment and inspiration to our young people. It's inspired a lot. I think we got four right now kids playing on our Riverman team that grew up through our youth program. The Rivermen was the, is definitely the impetus of that. The Peoria Rivermen Professional Hockey Team has provided this to our city for the last 41 years, since 1982, in our beautiful downtown arena. And it is a beautiful downtown arena, and I always thank our city council at that time in the late, late 70s, when they, they, they okayed the arena, and I can remember crawling around it in 80 with Pete and my dad and some other people, and just couldn't wait to see it come about, and it sure did. But the Rivermen need a lease, and they need an ice plant for the arena portion of the Civic Center complex ASAP. The team is honestly on the, at the 12th hour. The Rivermen organization is run by a very competent and fan-friendly staff. Our coach, John Gee Trudell, is the driving force of our Riverman team. Our Mustang, he also works with our Mustang group, which is a junior group, 16 to 20, and he's a big leader in our youth group, he'll work with any kid at any level. The team needs to make commitments to the Southern Professional Hockey League that were due on January 15th of this year. The league has granted the Rivermen an extension to get the following three items. We need a commitment to play in the 23-24 hockey season. That will only be predicated on a lease for, from our arena, which needs, which obviously needs the ice plant to make, to make that lease possible. Dates to make a home schedule for 28 home league games. We've been in the playoffs every year for eight years. We get into either two or three, so we're talking 30 games, and, you know, we need probably 32 dates when it's all said and done. We won the President's Cup last year, and in first place this year. Now, so we don't, we're not losing another strong entity in our Peoria. As author Brad Melzer, I read this about a week ago, stated, quote, "Leadership is not about being in charge." You know, and I, and I've been in charge of things, whether they be teams, or whether they be organizations. I work on about three or four different boards in the city, and proud to say I'm president of one of them. Leadership is not about being in charge, it's about taking care of those in your charge. And that's what you people do. You do it every day. I heard it here tonight, tremendous. And I'll finish up here real quick. Please take care of the people in our community that enjoy and love our Riverman hockey. I found 50 of them here, and I, I hope, I know this guy does, too, and I look around, I'm sure many, many others do, too. But thank you very much for your precious time. I mean that sincerely and concern. We have had 41 years of pro hockey in Peoria. Let's all do, let's all do what needs to be done so we can make, so we can have 41 more years of pro hockey at the Civic Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Next, we have Renee Waller, Selfie Space LLC. Ms. Waller?
Hello, and thank you very much for having me here and letting me come and talk. So my name's Renee Waller, and I started Selfie Space back in August of last year. I love downtown, and I'm really excited to be a part of any revitalization that is happening downtown. So I have great memories of military balls and concerts and things like that. But as a woman, as a veteran, a single mom, starting a business is rough, right? I don't have $57 million to go on a, spend on a redevelopment project, but I invested everything that I have in downtown. I redeveloped a little tiny space and made it something beautiful. It was a dump before. Literally, commerce was dumping furniture in there that they didn't want to get away, get rid of. So starting this, I really didn't feel like I was supported when I was going through the beginnings and trying to connect with the Small Business Development Center. I just felt kind of blown off and ignored. So I've done a lot on my own, and I've done a lot of connecting and reaching out and really trying to build connections, because that's what I needed help with. really trying to build connections, because that's what I needed help with. I'm not an elite person, I'm just a regular mom, a worker, like any other, maybe a lot of different women who might want to start their own businesses. And so I hope I set an example for other women who might want to as well. I don't get callbacks when I reach out for help, and before I go to any extremes to stay in business, because I want to be here for the next five years, I wanted to say hello and invite you guys to my space, and to see it. So I hope to be here and continue to be business, in business, and provide something fun for folks to do. It's a small event space with a selfie museum inside of it, and has incredible art inside and all kinds of fun stuff. So thank you all very much for your time, and maybe I'll see you sometime soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Our Assistant City Manager, Kimberly Richardson?
Yes, she came by, yeah.
You've met her?
Yes.
Okay, she's over our economic development team, so, okay.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and she mentioned that I needed strategic partnerships.
Right there.
And I wholeheartedly agree with her that I would like to have strategic partnerships. And so when I mentioned that I have trouble connecting with people and don't get callbacks or don't get help that I need, that was a part of that, me trying to reach out and make those connections and those strategic partnerships with folks in the community who are able to do that. So thank you again, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Okay.
Okay.
Next, we have Eric Emmert. Is Eric still here? Then we have Brad Salisbury.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for giving me this opportunity to address a topic that I think is well-known on everyone's mind here, and that is the ice plant and the future of the Peoria Riverman. My name's Brad Salisbury, reside at thirteen ninety-three Woodland Knolls in Metamora. So no, I do not live in your city, but I did live in your city for seven years when I first moved to Illinois. And I continue to shop, I continue to spend money, I attend events, I support small businesses in the city of Peoria. I'm encouraged by the comments that I've heard today, both here and in the media, that there is a plan being worked to keep the Riverman in Peoria, and it seems to address the need for the ice plant at the Peoria Civic Center. The Riverman hockey provides a family-friendly, affordable entertainment option for residents of the city and the region. A functioning ice plant is critical to the future of the team and continuing a forty-year tradition of hockey in Peoria. But this is more than just a mechanical system that needs repair. This is about quality of life in the Peoria area, the city, and the region. The Riverman players and staff are members of this community, and some make Peoria their permanent home. They help with fundraisers, they visit schools, they raise the spirits of sick children in our hospitals, and they coach youth sports. The Peoria Rivermen do more for the city and this region than only the revenue that's brought into this Peoria Civic Center on game nights. Hockey brings people to Peoria who would not otherwise be here. They might be job seekers, their players, their players' families, their residents in nearby towns, and people within this greater region that might not have the ability to go see hockey in a bigger market. As hockey fans, we're counting on you to help prioritize replacement of the ice plant and keeping the Riverman in Peoria, and keeping that tradition of minor league hockey alive. Professional hockey in Peoria was a major deciding factor when I moved to the area and accepted a job. Had Peoria not had hockey, I probably would have accepted a competing offer. The friends that I've made attending games seventeen years ago when I first came to the area are still my friends today. Sports teams can unite a city, they can bring pride to a region, they foster a sense of family, and they can bring in revenue. So I ask you to please continue to work with all the parties involved to help find a way to replace the ice plant and keep the Peoria Civic Center a viable and still affordable venue for hockey and other ice sports in 2023 and beyond. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Ms. Emily Hagaman.
I'm short, sorry. My name is Emily Hagaman, and first and foremost, I just want to thank you all for giving us this platform to speak tonight. We have a lot of people who are willing to come out in support of the Riverman. I wrote in an email just last week about my frustration with the Riverman not having their contract renewed. Now, I know you guys aren't the final decision-makers on the Peoria Riverman staying in the Peoria Civic Center, but the people who are, are appointed by the city, and your voice has significant pull within the PCC. My husband, Al Hagaman, is the current captain of the Peoria Riverman and has dedicated the last ten years to the Peoria Riverman Organization. He works with the Peoria Youth Hockey Association almost every night, and a good chunk in the summer, too. He is constantly out in our community. He is a living, breathing example of what kids could be if they work hard enough. I could brag on what this man does for hours, because it's Valentine's Day, but he is one of the many people associated with the Riverman that make a significant impact on a large chunk of the people in and around Peoria. I'm one of the founders of our Facebook group called Save the Riverman. This morning, Councilman Seer posted in our group that the Riverman are saved. We cannot thank you all enough for the time we know has been dedicated to this project. I got some really great replies from Councilmembers Grab, a fellow dean of students, Euler, and Allen, and Ruckregel. So thank you so, so much for doing that, for responding back to me. The only issue I see with this is that we do not have a contract, which is what we truly need for the Riverman to be saved. I know that tensions are high between the PCC and the Peoria Riverman Organization. The Peoria Civic Center stated as much in their radio interview with the Greg and Dan Show. We know this last hurdle is going to be great, and the only way our Peoria Riverman can truly be saved, please don't stop working to keep them here. We need your voices to pull through for us. I want to end on a quote that came through during the President Cup rally from Mayor Ali last year. Riverman are a staple of the community, both on and off the ice. Riverman are a vital part of Peoria's downtown entertainment experience, bringing countless memories to people in and out of Peoria. Thank you again for allowing us this platform.
Madam Clerk?
We do not have an executive session, so we're at adjournment.
Can I get a motion to adjourn, moved by Councilmember Euler, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your service.